Welcome to the Sammamish City Council Regular Meeting for May 5, 2015. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll call?
Mayor Tom Vance.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kathy Huckabee.
President.
Councilmember Dawn Jaren.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Here.
Councilmember Romero Valderrama.
President.
Councilmember Witten.
Nancy Witten.
Nancy Witten.
That's all? Okay.
That's it?
Next, could Councilmember Witten perhaps lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going too far, I want to -- I've been warned by our city clerk to warn you that we really should speak into the speakers and also make sure that they're actually on before you actually do that, so both those things.
I will try.
Yeah, you got it. Okay, thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda, including the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a second. Mr. Councilmember Odell, you had one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item number three for further discussion.
Okay. Item number three, I think we'll move it just below item number five before we start new business.
Okay.
I know Laura has someplace to be, so we'll get that out of the way. So, anything else? All in favor of the agenda plus the consent agenda, all in favor of approval, please say aye. As amended, I should say, please say aye. All opposed? Tonight, we do not have a student liaison report, I believe, but we do have presentations, two or three presentations, and I'll go ahead and introduce our first speaker from -- you know, I always -- and I've heard two different ways of saying this. I always say RIAA8. I don't know how you say it, but some people say Wyra8.
That's the old way.
That's the old way, so that's not the modern way.
Both ways.
The RIAA is the -- the RIAs are different regions of our area here that are watersheds. And tonight, we have a presentation on the RIAA8 salmon recovery, and we have their watershed coordinator, Jason Mulvihill-Kuntz. So, welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor Vance, and the rest of the council for having me here tonight. I'm a little tall for this microphone, and I'm going to do my best, especially after hearing the instructions.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't have a sergeant-at-arms, but you know.
Again, thank you for having me come and talk to you guys tonight. My name's Jason Mulvihill-Kuntz. I'm the watershed coordinator for salmon recovery in the Lake Washington Cedar-Sammamish watershed, which we affectionately call RIAA8. That's how I say it. And my presentation is twofold. It's one to let you guys know that we're at the 10-year mark of implementing Chinook salmon recovery, the regional recovery effort to address the listing of Chinook as a threatened species under the Endangered Species Act. So, we wanted to give our partners, our 28 local government partners, an update on where we've been, what we've accomplished, and where we have left to go. So, that's the first point. The second point is to let you know that we are also nearing the end of the 10-year inter-local agreement that enables that regionally-coordinated effort to happen. And so, this presentation is intended to give you some context for when you look at that agreement later. Actually, it's probably in the next coming few months, so give you guys some background for that. And I look up at the council, and I recognize at least three council members who have participated in RIAA8. There may be more before. So, it's actually a unique council in that most of the time, I look out at the councils I've presented to, and there's only one person who currently participates.
He's been doing it for 12 years or something.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so it's great that you guys have so much knowledge about what we're talking about. So, quickly to orient you, here's a map of the watershed. It's all of the area that drains out of the Cedar River, Issaquah Creek, all the water that drains into Lake Washington and Lake Sammamish, all the tributary streams that come into Lake Sammamish and Lake Washington, into the Sammamish River, all those creeks that drain from Snohomish County down into the north Lake Washington area, and then all that water that flows out the Ship Canal through the Ballard Locks and into Puget Sound. So, it's a big area. A couple of things from this map that I want you to get are the shaded areas. That's how we prioritize our area for recovery actions. The dark green areas are what we call Tier One, and it's our highest priority with a salmon comeback to spawn and rear as juvenile Chinook. And the lighter green areas are what we call Tier Two. Those areas are slightly less of a high priority, just because Chinook don't consistently use those areas for spawning, however they do periodically. So, it's important to focus on restoring and protecting habitat there in case something were to happen to one of our Tier One areas. They have other places to go. And then, the gray area, the kind of beige-gray area represents, as you probably imagine, the majority of our urban landscape, where the habitat has been degraded so much that we don't really have much of an opportunity to restore and protect habitat there, but it's still very important for water quality and water flow issues. And then, I also want to note that all of our lake shore and the Sammamish River and all of our marine nearshore is Tier One as well, because that's such an important area for the juvenile salmon, as they migrate out of our watershed into Puget Sound. So, those areas are a high priority as well. We have two Chinook populations in our watershed. One is the cedar population. They come in through the Ballard Locks, and they get to Lake Washington. They make a right-hand turn, and they go on up into the Cedar River to spawn. And then, we have a Sammamish population that, instead of making a right-hand turn, they go left at Lake Washington. They go on up into the Sammamish River, several of the tributary streams off the Sammamish, and into Lake Sammamish, and then some of them continue on up into Issaquah Creek. So, quite an array of areas that these guys hit. And I will note, the one unique thing about our water -- there are many unique things, but one to note is that we are the most populated and urban watershed in the state. So, that offers us some great opportunity, but also some challenges as we approach salmon recovery, as you can imagine. So, a quick timeline for you. Chinook were listed as threatened under the Endangered Species Act in 1999. That prompted the local governments in the watershed at the time, based on two concerns mainly. One was they didn't want the federal government to come in and tell you all what to do in terms of addressing that listing. There was a lot of desire to have some self-determination, to have the local governments band together and determine what you all wanted to do for salmon recovery, to tell the federal government that. So, and then, the second concern was the threat of potential lawsuit, third-party lawsuits related to the listing, and what would happen if you didn't address that. So, many of the jurisdictions felt if we come together as a whole and we show how we're proactively addressing the listing, that would be better and more effective than if we each tried to do it on our own. So, in 2001, that's exactly what happened. The 27 at the time local governments came together under an interlocal agreement to develop a salmon recovery plan in order to address this listing, and that's what happened between 2001 and 2005. That plan was finished in 2005. We started implementing it in 2006, and the federal government finally approved it as the federal plan for salmon recovery in our watershed in 2007. And, as I mentioned now, 2015, we're nearing the first 10 years of implementation. And that's really the period of time that we charted for ourselves for initial implementation, kind of see how it went, what challenges we had, how our experience was. Again, salmon recovery is a very long-term effort, but we took 10 years. It was kind of the period of time people could wrap their brains around. So, we're at that point. Puget Sound, I want to emphasize that our plan is part of a bigger puzzle. There are 14 watersheds in Puget Sound. Ours is one, and there are 14 watershed recovery plans that roll up into the Puget Sound Recovery Plan that ultimately roll up into the action agenda for Puget Sound Recovery. So, salmon recovery is a huge cornerstone, foundation of Puget Sound Recovery. In fact, I've heard Bill Ruckelshaus note that if we do salmon recovery, if we achieve Chinook salmon recovery, we've done 80% of what we need to do for Puget Sound Recovery. So, it's that important. Leadership of salmon recovery in our watershed is done through a group called the RIAA8 Salmon Recovery Council. That's the body that has representatives from the 28 participating local governments, including Sammamish. That's where Councilmember Odell currently represents you. And that body also has stakeholder representatives of various community groups, interested citizens, our state and federal agency partners, business, environmental groups. It's quite a big table, as you can imagine, but the group is extremely effective at leveraging the individual resources that each one of the partners brings to the table for the broader benefit of the watershed as a whole. And it's amazing at how strong it is at fostering regional governance and coordination on salmon recovery, but also other related issues as well. And the role of the group really is to give us direction on implementation, give us some policy guidance, help build the capacity for doing this work, and then also helping to educate and engage the broader partners that we work with and the public. So, I mentioned there are 28 local governments. I apologize that this table is challenging to read, but what I wanted to call out is this is our annual cost-share table, that each one of our partner governments pays an annual amount to enable this work to happen, and this is your 2015 cost-share table. And you'll note Sammamish pays a little over $18,000 this year to enable the work to happen, and you can see how that relates to the other partners in the watershed. This is done through a formula that is based on your square miles, your area of your jurisdiction, your population, and your assessed value. Basically, it's a proxy for your jurisdiction's impact to the watershed. What does that money fund? What does that interlocal agreement funding cover? It funds a small staff team that I manage to coordinate our salmon recovery council and its associated committees. We have a technical committee of scientists that's focused on making sure our work is scientifically based. And then, we also do a lot of regional and statewide collaboration around salmon recovery, so it's about coordinating with those groups as well. And ultimately, it's mostly focused on implementing that recovery plan I mentioned. We have 1,200 actions that are called for in that plan, and so you can imagine it's quite a big job to figure out what do we do first? How do we sequence our work? How do we prioritize our work? So, we do a lot of that with our project sponsors and our partners to figure out what should we be doing, where should we invest our resources most effectively. And we track projects. We report out to our funders and our partners on how we're doing, and we do a lot of communications and outreach. And then, like I mentioned, we do a lot of technical coordination, making sure that our plan is as science-based as possible. We are involving new information as we get it and making sure that we're adaptively managing as we need to. We focused on Chinook salmon recovery, but salmon recovery is inherently multifaceted. It touches so many other important regional efforts, and so we do integrate with those other efforts. So, I wanted you to just see the broad array of things that we focus on when we do salmon recovery. I'll note a few. We work on fish passage at the Ballard Locks. We work on coordinating with hatchery and harvest management with our habitat work. We focus on shoreline riparian stewardship, water quality, stormwater management, and ultimately, as I mentioned, Puget Sound recovery. What does our plan say needs to be done? Well, it tells us why our salmon are in trouble, tells us what our goals are, our strategies, and then it tells us three types of actions that we need to take. One is the on-the-ground projects, your habitat restoration and protection work, then also land use regulations and planning, and that's largely the purview of local governments, as you all can imagine. And then, also outreach, education, and stewardship work that we need to do to advance this effort. So, what have we accomplished in nearly 10 years? Since about 2005, when we had that plan developed, we've implemented 100 projects that have either been completed or are currently actively being implemented. And I want to note that that's only 22% of what we charted for ourselves in the first 10 years, and that's not because we don't know what we need to do. We have a huge amount of priority actions that we've identified. It's more a resource limitation issue. We charted a very aggressive funding goal for ourselves in our plan, and the resources we thought that were going to come from the federal government and the state government largely have not shown up to the degree that we thought they might or hoped that they might. So, we've completed less than we hoped, but still, a lot of good work has been done. We have invested both local funds to the tune of over $15 million through the King Conservation District and the King County Flood Control District. They give us money to allocate to partners to do work, so we've implemented over $15 million of that, which is really important, because that has leveraged a tremendous amount to the tune of nearly $28 million of state and federal money. So, those local funds have brought in all that additional resource that we would not have otherwise had in our watershed. And then, we also get some state and federal money to allocate directly, which we've allocated nearly $20 million of that. So, quite a bit of investment. Still, we would hope to do more, and we continue to focus on trying to find those funds. What has that turned into as on-the-ground benefits? Over 2,600 acres have been protected either through easement or fee title acquisition. Over 450 acres of riparian areas have been treated. That's removing invasive species, replanning with native plants. Nearly a mile of levees have been removed or set back. That's largely done on the Cedar River. And then, a corresponding 73 acres of floodplain has been reconnected, and over 8,000 feet of lake shore has been restored. As I mentioned, those lakeshores are really important for the juveniles, and that's both Lake Sammamish and Lake Washington. For Lake Sammamish in particular, Lake Sammamish is a critical resource, and also streamside restoration and stewardship are important priorities for us. Chinook need those shallow water areas along the lake. They also need healthy vegetated stream sides. Both of those are critical. And for Sammamish, you guys have focused on several efforts in some of your smaller creeks, like Zach Hughes, Ebright, and then also some Lake Sammamish shoreline work. We also funded a project to look for the projects that we wanted to do that had benefit to both Chinook as well as the Kocane that I know that you guys are very interested in helping to restore as well. And we continue to look for opportunities with you and others along Lake Sammamish to do shoreline protection, both public areas, but also working with private landowners to do that work. So, what's next? We're going to continue to implement the plan that we have on the books right now. We're going to update that plan, do a 10-year plan update, fold in new science, new information. We've done 10 years of implementation. We've learned a lot. There's a lot more to integrate. And then, also, as I mentioned, we're going to renew that interlocal agreement and that memorandum of understanding to enable the work to continue for another 10 years. So, there's a draft out right now for comment, and you guys will see a final version in July, which we will have available for signature until December. So, you'll see it soon. And I just want to note, in kind of wrapping up, that as we look forward for ongoing recovery, it's really up to us, it's up to our communities, to determine whether we're going to have salmon coming back to our watershed and our streams in the future. We face a lot of challenges, public will, political support moving forward. It's a long-term effort, really hard to maintain those things over time. Adequate funding, as I mentioned, is challenging. Climate change and ocean conditions give us uncertainty moving forward. And then, also, land use pressure. We're one of the biggest, fastest-growing regions in the country, so how we develop our communities over time is really going to determine whether we're going to be successful or not. And then, lastly, I just want to emphasize that local governments working together on efforts like this really do make a difference. So, with that, I will take questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a great program. As you know, we support it wholeheartedly. I do have a couple of questions on this slide. First of all, you all have pink glasses, but earlier, when you have red sunglasses on, what's going on on that?
That's one of our outreach programs. Good question. We look a little odd, right? They are --
Red better, buddy.
The red better. Okay, well, I'll take that feedback.
Pink salmon or red salmon, remember?
Right. Those are glasses that are basically used so that you can see the salmon in the stream and you don't get the reflection off the water. So, we hand those out at some of our outreach programs, so the kids and the public can actually see the salmon in the stream in the river, so.
All right, thank you. Three slides back, please.
Yep. This one.
Stop there.
Okay.
You have benefits include stormwater management.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about how that benefits the stormwater?
Definitely. So, along your stream sides, if you have completely removed vegetation and you've got, you know, development basically right up to your stream edge, every ounce of water that runs off of that, either lawn or pavement or what have you, is going to go directly into that creek or that stream. If you have a vegetated buffer on those streams that's healthy, has some mature vegetation, you're going to allow for -- the water's going to slow down. It's going to have time to seep into the groundwater. That's going to filter out the contaminants, but it's also going to slow flows, so you don't get your streams hit with such hard, flashy flows when it rains, and that reduces erosion and helps manage that stormwater.
Okay, the vegetated buffers.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. Jason, good report.
Great.
You didn't mention -- you mentioned the Kocane projects there. You didn't say how the Kocane projects got in the Chinook recovery plan, and that was --
I think that was you.
Well, no. It was citizens from Sammamish that came down to one of the RIAA meetings and saying, "Don't forget our little red fish."
That's right.
And after they left, the group had a discussion and created a wild card category that were of particular public interest, and out of that came some projects for the start list. I thought the start list was 150 projects, but...
Yeah, it's grown even. It's with the projects we've added over 10 years, it's almost 200 projects.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, but you're right. Kocane, we've noted, are very important. We support that work strongly, even though we're focused on Chinook, and so we continue to look for opportunities where we've got some overlapping benefit and we can do some work. And we have advanced and provided grant funding for some of those projects that are being worked on right now.
Right, and we thank you for that support.
Of course, yeah.
Councilmember Keller?
Thank you. I just -- just a clarification. Early on in your report, you had made the comment, "Most urban watershed," and you were comparing to the area? What was that?
In the state.
In our state?
Yeah, in Washington State, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Odell?
Thank you. Jason, excellent report. As you were talking about the projects, I was looking at the cheat sheet of the package you handed out, which was actually something I could really read as opposed to the chart, which is very busy.
Right.
But I did note there were two projects in Sammamish. One is completed and one is underway. Can you talk a little bit more about those?
Yeah, the one that was completed was on Zach Hughes Creek, and that was actually completed many years ago, before the plan was even developed. And so, I'm not that familiar with it, but I know that it was working on where Zach Hughes meets the lake, so it was that mouth of the creek and restoring that.
At the outlet, okay.
Yep, that area. The other one that's going on is on Ebright Creek, and we're working on both looking at the opportunities at the mouth, where again, where it meets the lake shore, but also the first little bit of the stream. That's where Chinook would duck into as juveniles. Certainly, Kocane will use that entire stream, so you're very familiar with Mr. Wale Perea, who's done some work on that stream as well, out of his own pocket. And so, we're looking for more opportunities in that lower section of that creek, as well as others, to restore some of that habitat, especially where it meets the lake. That's the most important part for Chinook.
Okay, great. One thing that might help is, which is on my list at least, is replacing the culverts for both Zach Hughes and Ebright, and that might actually open up potentially some more Chinook area as well.
That's great to know, and I know, I'm sure you guys are familiar, that culvert removal has been kind of a big issue all the way up to the state level, and I anticipate that we're going to see more action from the state focused on local areas as well, on what culverts can we address, what culverts can we improve. So, knowing where we have fish passage issues on some of those culverts is going to be really important, I think, in the near future, about telling folks where we can do work and prioritizing and strategizing with other culverts that need to be removed, whether they're on state property or county or local city property.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Great, and thank you for Sammamish's.
And we'll be looking forward to more information on that ILA.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, do we have our -- Melanie, do we have our next speaker here? Yes, okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next presentation is about Astound Broadband Telecommunication Franchise Agreement. I believe there are representatives here, but our esteemed Administrative Services Director, Beth Goldberg, has been coordinating this. Maybe Beth can introduce our guest here tonight. This item, we do have a franchise agreement before you. It's ordinance number seven, so this is very timely to have this presentation. So, Beth, do you want to introduce our guest?
I would be happy to do that. I'm Beth Goldberg, the Director of Administrative Services. Good evening, everyone. At the podium is Jim Penny from Astound Broadband, more commonly known as WAVE, and they have submitted a franchise application to the city of Sammamish later on this evening. I will be walking through the details of that franchise agreement, but in the meantime, we wanted to give Jim Penny, who's the chief counsel for Astound, the opportunity to talk to you about the company and what they are proposing to do here in the city of Sammamish.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. I am Jim Penny. I'm Executive Vice President of Business and Legal Affairs for WAVE Division Holdings, which is the parent company of Astound, and we use the brand name WAVE. In a variety of other areas, we provide services. WAVE started in 2003, and when we started, we were a small, upstart cable company determined to compete against Comcast. The first set of system acquisitions we made were up here in the northwest, up in the La Conner area, Stanwood, Camano Island, and there was some marginal competition with Comcast there. But the next set of acquisitions we made were down in the San Francisco Bay area, where in about a 200,000, 220,000 home area, we compete head-to-head with Comcast, and we take market share away from them on a daily basis. I'm not sure if any of you heard the retention call that made YouTube and a variety of news reports, but there was a Comcast retention expert basically browbeating a customer who was seeking to disconnect. They were seeking to disconnect to come to our service, and we see that happen quite frequently. In addition to the Seattle metropolitan area, pretty much up to the Canadian border, we also serve in the Portland area, down south of Portland. We also serve, as I mentioned, in the San Francisco Bay, and then also on each side of the city of Sacramento. All told, we pass about 680,000 homes, and we have about 245,000 customers. In most of our service areas, we provide, just like Comcast does, the triple play of services. So, cable TV services together with video-on-demand services. We have about 25,000 hours of video-on-demand services that are available to our customers. We also have high-speed data service. Footprint-wide, we serve up to 110 megabits per second, and we also have, in many areas in the Seattle metropolitan area, a 1 gigabit per second service. That's in areas right in the downtown corridor of Seattle. We will be expanding that service extensively over the next year or two. We also have phone service, and that's where we get into the name Astound. Astound Broadband is the name of our competitive local exchange carrier company. It's registered with the state of Washington and the states of Oregon and California. Because it's a competitive local exchange carrier, it's the appropriate entity that should hold the telecommunications franchise. But again, it is a subsidiary, a wholly-owned subsidiary of WAVE Division Holdings, and again, that's the name that we use as a brand name throughout our footprint. I wanted to give you just that brief background on WAVE, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have, but I can walk you through the presentation here, and if I press the right button, we'll see if it works. There we go. So, Astound Broadband LLC, for Limited Liability Company, is the entity that's applying for the franchise. As I mentioned, we go by the name, brand name, WAVE. We also have other brand names from other companies that we've acquired that are in the process of being phased out. Up in the Bellingham area, we go by the name BlackRock. In downtown Seattle, we go by Spectrum Networks, or Seattle's Best Internet, also known as condo internet. You may have seen some of those trucks driving around. Again, all of those are transitioning over to the WAVE brand name, and the service that we will be providing, kind of the premier service, will be gigabit service, and that's going to be known as WAVE-G. We're creating a new, very robust fiber network throughout the Pacific Northwest, and I will explain why that's the case here in just a second. We hope to start construction on the network in the spring and summer of this year, with a pretty significant portion of it being completed by the fall or winter. The network is initially designed and constructed to connect existing cell towers for a variety of cellular telephone companies. We have a contract with one of those cellular telephone companies to connect what ultimately could be as many as 4,000 of their towers in a network spanning from Sacramento up to the Canadian border, and this is one phase of that large construction project. The cell carrier, of course, will get a few dark fibers connecting each of their cell towers, but as we do the construction, we're planning for the future, and in particular, planning for the services that we want to render to the communities through which we pass initially, Sammamish, of course, being one of those. Samamish, of course, being one of those. So we will build, in most cases, 400-plus fibers in each of the areas that we construct, with some of the main trunk lines being 800-plus fibers. So we'll have essentially vast capacity of fiber that we can bring to bear to solve solution, communication solution problems for businesses. And eventually, our hope is to get into residential service. As I mentioned at the bottom of that slide, we're not currently considering, there is no plan immediately to provide residential services. But that was where we started our lives, and we like commercial services. We really like residential services, too. WAVE differentiates itself by the quality of service that we provide to our customers. For example, all of our call agents, both the sales and billing side, as well as the technical side, are co-located in our corporate executive offices. They are literally 20 feet from my door, maybe 25 feet from our CEO's door, and each one of the five senior executives of the company. We make it our business to walk through that call center every day and listen to a couple of calls. And we also get a report on a daily basis of any call center issues, both on the technical side, as well as the sales and billing side. So we, every morning, wake up, the first email that's in our inbox is usually from the call center describing those issues of the day. And if there are issues that we think we can solve, that we can get involved with, we make it our business to go in and do that, that morning. We have an incredible reputation for quality of service. We judge ourselves pretty harshly. We use what's called the net promoter score. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But it's essentially a very simple question asked to customers. Would you recommend WAVE to a friend or a close business associate? And if the answer is yes, it counts in favor. It's graded on a scale of 1 to 10, and only the top three scores count for us. All the rest of the scores count either as neutral or against us. And the net of that, of course, the net promoter score. Ours is 62 as of the last quarter. It's risen in virtually every single quarter that we've, we've been in operation. And that is a score that's equal to what FedEx would get, or Nordstrom would get. There are very few cable operators or ISPs that would get that. We've won various awards. We were named as the Cable Operator of the Year in 2012 by Cablefax Magazine. And this year, or last year, 2014, PC Magazine ranked us as the best ISP in the Northwest, with the fastest speeds and the most reliable service. So we're very excited about this opportunity to provide service to the cell towers. Obviously, that's a paying customer, and we're going to construct the network because they are the paying customer, carrying the freight. They get served first. But once they are served, then we're ready to move into providing services for businesses, and as I mentioned, potentially residential services. The types of services that would be available are, of course, dark fiber. For very sophisticated companies who want to do their own transmission, we provide the pipeline for them in essence with the dark fiber. As I mentioned, we'll also provide gigabit bandwidth and advanced networking services, and of course, telephone services. We have already, by the way, been in discussions with various folks from the city of Samamish about potential services that we could provide to, to your governmental entity. Our standard procedure on that is a 50% discount over what our standard rate is. And I can virtually guarantee to you that we will be cheaper than whoever you're buying your service from. And if not, we'll make it so. This is a little bit difficult to see, but it shows you where our network currently is. I mentioned the four separate service areas that we have, kind of the Seattle metropolitan area, stretching up to the Canadian border, the Portland area, the San Francisco area, and the Sacramento area. All four of those areas are connected with a 10 gigabit per second fiber network. And that's our network in, in the vast majority of places. We do lease some of the long-haul fiber from other carriers, such as AT&amp;T, or Level 3, or some of the other big carriers. But the key is that it is essentially one network. So we have duplicative facilities in California and up here in Washington, so that it can immediately fail over. We have four internet points of presence where we pick up and drop off traffic. So in the event there is a problem at one of those, or if there's a problem in the network, the signals immediately reroute and go to the point of presence where they can be transmitted into the internet or picked up from the internet. Here is a little bit easier to view diagram of where the network will be once it is constructed up here in the Northwest. Clearly, the immediate benefit will be improved cellular service. When cellphone companies have, have a huge problem, and if you reach into your pocket, you'll see what it is. We're all using cellphones, and we're all transmitting lots of data. We're picking up high-definition video from ESPN or some other video provider. We're transmitting lots of data. We're sending pictures of our grandkids around. That takes up a lot of bandwidth. The towers themselves are relatively easily upgraded, the electronics on the towers. Those are just radio transmitters, and they can be upgraded pretty easily. What the cell companies have a problem with is what they call backhaul. And that's the facilities that connect those cell towers back to the public switched telephone network or to the internet, so that they can fully transmit that data. We will resolve that problem for them by providing dark fiber to them. And dark fiber, as you know, has almost infinite carrying capacity. We'll provide these advanced networking solutions, self-healing networks. Everything is designed in concentric rings with the ability to transmit data in either direction. We'll provide them with access to their provider partners, and more importantly, we'll be able to provide access to our customers to their network partners. We will provide competition, obviously. It will enable new startups, more telecommuting, local jobs. And of course, fiber is generally considered by almost everybody to be a critical economic development resource. And we want to make sure that we're here to provide that. We've gotten a lot of franchises as, as a consequence of this effort. Those are just a few of the cities. We do have franchises with over 200 cities. I've provided Beth with the full list, and you're certainly welcome to call any of those to get their view on our reputation as a service provider, the quality of service. And of course, the key thing is whether customers call them with any complaints. One of the questions that frequently comes up is, what will this do to our city in terms of aesthetics? Because we are using fiber, and these fibers are smaller than the diameter of a human hair. They're, they're just tiny. So even when you think of a bundle of 800 of them, it is still a very, very small package. They are typically in the 1-inch to 1 and 1/2-inch range, as compared to the telephone company wires, which are the old copper wires, or in some cases, some of the old cable operator wiring, which is coaxial cable, but it's also a very large bundle, which can be up to 2 and 1/2 inches in diameter, in some cases even larger. It will be, of course, attached to utility poles, and the utility pole owners have requirements in accordance with the National Electric Safety Code, which requires clearance above ground level, distance, safety distance from any other cables. Our wiring will have little or no impact on any views. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions now, or after Beth provides information on the franchise. I'll still be here and able to answer questions with respect to that as well.
Okay, we have at least one question. Deputy Mayor Huckabee.
Yes, I think I'm feeling a little overwhelmed by the technology, but I'm trying to understand what service you actually are going to be providing, what additional benefit our community would get when you put the wire. It sounds like it, I understand the term backhaul now that you explained it. I really appreciate that. But how is that going to, how am I going to go to my neighbor and tell them that we've engaged in this franchise, and now you will get better what?
Initially, it'll be better cellular service, because it'll make a more robust connection back to the public switched telephone network. So the cell carriers will be able to carry more data. There will be fewer dropped calls, assuming everything goes well on their end. But that's, that's one of the reasons why they're engaging us to provide this service, so that they can transmit more data from their cell towers back to the switched network and to the internet to increase their throughput, the capacity of their network to carry data. And of course, their network, when it's overloaded, just rejects data. And you get dropped calls, your, your email doesn't go through, things of that nature. So that will be the immediate benefit. Once that customer is satisfied, as I mentioned, we have to provide service to that customer first, because they're the one who are, they're paying for it.
I understand.
But once we do that, we will be moving into the communities and first going for business services and governmental entities. We have an entire division of our company that is designed and focused on governmental, enterprise, healthcare, and schools. And we provide service now, my last count that I took was about 59 different school districts in Washington, Oregon, and California. And we provide that service using the, the discount methodology that's afforded by the United States Service Corporation. It's called USAC, if you've heard of that. It's a governmental agency that affords effectively a discount to the school districts in a couple of different ways. We charge our rate to the school. The school applies to USAC, gets a subsidy back. Or, in the alternative, we charge a discounted rate, then we apply it to USAC and get the subsidy back to us to effectively make it our standard rate. But in either event, the school district gets the benefit of that as a much lower price service. And we'll, we'll do dark fiber, which enables them to connect all their schools together and run their own network however they want to. Or we'll provide what we call lit services. So we will do the data transmission. One of the best descriptions I heard of dark fiber was from the guy who owned BlackRock, and we bought it from him. And he said, "I'm like a water company, except I don't sell water." And it's an apt description. He's got the pipes, and you, as the customer, put your lasers on each end, and you're able to transmit as much data as you want. The very name of our company, WAVE Division Holdings, comes from one of those technologies, which is the ability to transmit much, much more data through that same fiber, that, that smaller-than-a-human-hair piece of glass. In the first days of the transmission, lasers were one color, and you transmitted data like a computer, on and off, switching. They discovered later that you could transmit data on the entire spectrum of colors. So now there's 144 different colors of light going through that same fiber at the same time, carrying data. It's just an incredible technology.
Going back to my first question, one of the causes for dropped calls is more of our geography. That's not going to be improved at all. It's...
Potentially, it will be. And, but again, that depends on the cell company. We don't have an element of that, other than providing them the backhaul. But in San Francisco, for example, the cell company that we're working with down there has asked us to put in what they call microcells, or they're sometimes referred to as pico cells. And they're essentially small radio transmitters that we put on our distribution network in those very hilly areas of San Francisco, where they have trouble seeing the towers that are nearby. Obviously, not many people want to see those big towers put in their backyard. And this affords a very easy way of transmitting data. They're virtually inconspicuous. They're small little radio transmitters with little antenna that, that sit up on, on the, on the poles, or on the wire next to the pole. Again, that, that's something we'd obviously have to come back to you to get permission to do. That's not part of what we're asking for here. But that's one of the cool technologies that's available to the cell companies. And, but by having the backhaul that we provide, it'll afford them the ability to do that. Now, I don't have control over whether they actually do that, but I know in many cases, they are trying as hard as they can to expand their footprint, because they don't want to have dropped calls either.
And then when you start providing services to the city or schools, will you be laying cable in the ground, or will you be using what is currently there and just switching service providers? How does that work?
Virtually, all of the facilities that are either on the poles or in the ground currently, excuse me, are owned by some other provider, and they don't give that up. So we'll have to install our own facilities to do that. And that's one of the reasons why we like to go with the aerial construction. It's much less expensive. We certainly don't shy away from underground construction if we have to do that. But again, it's about 10 to 12 times as expensive to do that.
Right. So if you were going to expand and reach into the residential area, you'd have to lay new pipe?
We would, yes. And in some cases, there's already conduit available, and some of that conduit has empty space, and we can just pull our wires through that, our, our fiber through that. By the way, in virtually all of the new construction we do, it is fiber to the home. So throughout downtown Seattle, where we're providing the gigabit service, it's fiber to the premises, or it's fiber somewhere within the building, and then an ethernet network within the building. But in either case, it's essentially fiber to the back of your computer.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you. Jim, very interesting and very exciting to have you come to our city. A couple of questions. One is, if the city doesn't want to wait until your company finally gets around to residential, do you partner with cities that want to do municipal broadband?
As a matter of fact, we're in discussions. I probably can't tell you with whom at this moment, because it's not public yet, and it would be a breach of confidence. But we are in discussions with several different municipalities, some here on the east side, as well as in other parts of Washington, and in three different communities in Oregon, to do exactly that. You know, Google sort of did the tease, and only picks what they want to do. We're happy to work with communities, and we have a number of different projects that we're looking at right now. Just in the city of Seattle, for example, this is not a public-private partnership, but in the city of Seattle, we're constructing fiber to the home in the Eastlake neighborhood, also up in the Fremont neighborhood, and the Ballard neighborhood.
And then on your map, I saw the future network. You show a line going across Lake Samamish.
That might be an error.
There's a couple, a couple of lines going across there. I was just curious of whether you're going to lay cable at the bottom of the lake or not.
I don't think that's in the plans.
Okay. And then, on 228th, we have the local electrical and phone service underground, but the high-tension wires are above. Are you proposing, then, to run your cable between the high-tension poles?
In virtually every circumstance, the pole owner, in that case Puget Sound Energy, I think owns most of the poles, will not allow that. We'll have to go underground in those areas.
Okay, good. And by the way, I'm a WAVE customer over on Hood Canal, too.
And I hope you're a happy customer.
I am indeed. Thank you.
Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Jim, thanks for the presentation. Really interesting. If you, assuming we kind of agree on the franchise, what would the route be that you would use through our city?
It is going to go principally north-south along 228th, and then Sohali Way. There are a few spurs off of that to reach to certain cell towers. But the final design elements haven't been completed yet. That, that's going to depend on availability of poles, where we have to go underground, any kind of barriers that are in the way, like, like a lake, stuff like that.
Okay. I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is, are there any electronic interference issues with this?
No, because everything that goes through the fiber is just pulses of light. There's no electromagnetic spectrum that's used at all. It is just pulses of light through the glass.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Whitten.
Well, you answered one of them right there. So the radiation isn't an issue for this type of technology?
That's correct, yeah.
Something puzzles me. You mentioned, I don't think we have any overhead poles, except for streetlights, except for the high transmission line. So if you're not going to go on the high transmission lines, are you going to underground it the entirety of 228?
I'm not positive about that. I'll have to check with our engineering team. There may be adjacent poles near there. I'm actually not sure about that.
You did say that you, in areas where you don't have access to the correct type of poles, you will go underground?
That's correct, yeah.
Which you just said.
Or in other areas where a municipality has a requirement that all utilities be underground, of course, we'll go underground, yeah.
The benefit to cell towers, is one of the benefits that they can build less of them?
Only if they adopt the technology that I mentioned, that we're helping them with down in the San Francisco Bay area, which is the microcells, or pico cells, as they call them.
So it really won't have much of a benefit in terms of that aspect of it?
Correct.
More people, they'll still have to increase the number of towers, even in a given service area. It doesn't change geographically.
Right.
The increased usage in that geographic area that's been defined will require more of... cell tower service.
That's correct. Although, their ability to upgrade the radios on those towers is increasing on kind of an annual basis. We own a variety of towers in some of our service areas, and one in particular in California, it's a 480-foot tower. And so, we have three different cellular phone companies that have put their facilities up there. And I am not exaggerating when I tell you that practically every year, one of those companies wants to go onto the tower to upgrade the quality of their transmission radio equipment up there. That's, of course, what connects the tower to the cell phones. But their problem is, they can only upgrade those so much, depending on what the backhaul capabilities are. So we're solving that problem for them.
If you're just going to run the wires down 228th as a corridor, how would you provide residential service to the east side of 228th?
Wiring, of course, would have to come off of that as a spur. But the beauty of fiber is that the transmission can go for huge distances before you need any kind of amplification. It's 20 miles plus, depending on the number of splices. And so, the ability to extend fiber is just tremendous.
So, why should Semamish grant you this if there's really very little benefit to Semamish? I mean, I would love to see you come in and, I'm one of the unhappy Comcast customers, and would love to see you come in and compete and give us a choice. I mean, we're 90-some percent residential.
I understand that. And clearly, we understand the community's desires, and because of that, that's one of the reasons why we're excited about moving into this area with our commercial network. As I mentioned, the initial use of it is going to be commercial. But once the network is built, it has expansion capability.
I'm just, I'm very concerned, though, and also, if somebody else wants to come in, and I mean, if you were undergrounding, I'd have a lot less of a concern of just being a corridor for you to serve business, which is on either end. It's not in the city itself. So we're basically doing you a big favor, I think, in terms of making that possible. But what could incentivize you to look more closely at providing these three, what did you call them, the three-tiered services?
Mm-hmm.
To our city? That's something that I think is really, would be very meaningful to our community.
Clearly, we'd be very interested in any kind of a public-private partnership. We'd be happy to have those discussions with you. We think that the future, though, of video programming is, like so many other things, it's going to just be an app on your computer pretty soon, or your TV. The way that cable TV programming is currently distributed, and the economics associated with it, really dictates that there's going to be a couple of providers. Comcast will be one, and there'll be a couple of others. Everybody else will adopt those applications that those companies distribute, and they will get their video programming over the internet. That may take a few years to occur in a more complete way, but you certainly see the genesis of it now. Netflix, for example, has about three times the number of customers that Comcast has. And of course, Netflix distributes solely over the internet. Hulu, which provides network programming, has several million customers. And again, it's distributed solely over the internet. We think that that's the future. And so, by having a robust internet access, a Wave G, for example, with gigabit services, not only will you be able to have your telephone application, you can have your video application, you can have all the other apps that you know and love.
Wonderful.
Councilmember Keller?
Hi, Jim. Thank you for the information. I'm curious about something. Councilmember O'Dell had mentioned no interference when he first started, but my thought was, the high-tension wires on 228th, they're very high poles. But in your report, you were saying nothing, you wouldn't put anything less than 19 feet. But 19 feet seems low to me, if you're in a residential neighborhood in an area where those lines would be. So, you haven't done the survey, but should we be concerned about the response to our residents?
No, actually, 19 feet is the National Electric Safety Code requirement of above-ground clearance. And in some cases, we can put it higher than that. It depends on what the pole owner will allow. But distributors such as we, a telecommunications distributor, is assigned a specific slot, a specific place on the poles, at which level we're allowed to place our facilities. So it's truly dictated by the pole owner.
And so, the proximity to other lines that are existing on the pole, really not a problem? Is there a?
Well, there's safety considerations. There is no electrical interference consideration, but there's certainly safety considerations. So there are mandatory spacing requirements under the National Electric Safety Code. And again, the pole owner, of course, dictates those spacing requirements as well.
Okay. And then, the last thing is, I guess I wouldn't expect this, you haven't done, you weren't involved in the study yourself. So, I know the questions about, would you be underground in that? It's not something you know, you didn't actually do it, but has it been done? Have they actually cited this in our city and looked at it?
Not fully. They've made some preliminary estimates using Google Maps and tracking through what would be the most efficient route, which may not be the route that ultimately gets followed, because it'll be the availability of poles, the requirements of undergrounding, any obstacles in the way that they need to go around. So the final decisions won't be made. And those decisions will be made in consultation with your Public Works Group, because we'll need to get permits for every piece of work that's done in the public right-of-way. The franchise agreement is like kind of a master permit, saying, you can attach your facilities, but only after you get permits and describe for us exactly what you're going to do and where you're going to do it, and describe for us how you're going to deal with traffic flagging and other safety considerations. So, all of those other pieces are, you know, months in the works.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, thank you. Very interesting presentation and great questions by my brethren here. You started the presentation mentioning that you were taking market share from Comcast, and you'd mentioned Comcast several times in there. What is your comparison on market share on the east side here to Comcast?
We do not compete directly with Comcast.
You've gone through how you were entering into that, but just what's your penetration in the market compared to them?
Well, let's put it this way, our annual revenue is equal to about one day of Comcast's revenue. Give you a sense of the scale.
Thank you.
There were ways to go.
Yeah. Good way to make a comparison.
Okay. You'll be staying for the presentation on the ordinance, I believe?
I will. Happy to answer any additional questions.
There may be some additional questions at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim, for joining us.
Jim, thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, one more presentation.
We are sorry that we're taking some time, but these are some important topics. And next presentation is coming from our finance department. It's the update about the impact fee and year-end report. As usual, they do have always a good report to share with you. So tonight, our finance director, Mr. Joe Kounasa, and he's got his staff, so I'm going to ask him to introduce his staff here. I know Chris is standing back there, too. So, Joe, are you ready to give your update?
If he can't get the technology working, right? We love you, Joe.
Thank you, Ben. May I remember the council? Yeah, we're on, right? With me is Chris Gianini. We're here to go over, actually, present for you our 2014, I'm sorry, our finance and IT department update for today. And as well, we're going to talk about 2014 financial results, 2015 first quarter financial results, and also talk about the 2014-215 carryforwards. Quick department presentation for you, first with the finance division. Chris, who is next to me here, and Allison Gabata have done a great deal of work on the budget since the budget was passed by the city council towards the end of last year. They've prepared the final documents and distributed them. Chris has prepared the budget in brief for the second biennium in a row. She's made it her own, and it's a great, not only informative document for the city, but also a marketing piece. It really, it's laid out nicely for folks. That has been submitted to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, for their consideration for the Excellence in Budget Award. We're also working on 2014 to 2015 carryforward adjustment, which you will be seeing tonight. And before we know it, we'll be talking about the 15 and 16 mid-biennium budget update. That's going to occur in the fall of this year. We'll update our revenue projections, and then budget for anything significantly has happened since the budget was adopted. As usual, we have our monthly monitoring, the Financial Management Report, which is posted quarterly on our website. We're close, by the end of this week, you will have the year-end report from 2014, as well as the first quarter report. We're having the, we're trying to get the integration with the investment software back up online with that. Accounting Services, Jennifer Dilly, another certified public accountant, is our accounting manager, and she works closely with Jody Bass and Marlene Dunham. They are working on the 2014 CAFRA, a comprehensive annual financial report, and preparing for the 2014 audit. The auditor should be on site beginning this month. They're starting a bit later this year than they had in the past, but they've assured us they've got the, once they do start, they will be able to perform their audit and issue a report to us. In the past, we've had them kind of break up their audit. It's taken a lot longer when they've started earlier, so I'm assuming there's not going to be any holdup in time. This group's also responsible for payroll, approximately 85 full-time people and 50 part-time people. This time of year is really busy with our seasonal employees, as well as producing approximately 2,700 accounts payable warrants, paying our bills each year. My colleagues won't let me sit here and talk to you about awards, but I am just going to point out that we did receive, once again, the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is timely, because we are going into our audit and preparing our CAFRA for 2014. It's reviewed by the GFOA staff and a special review committee, and we've received this award since 2009. Jennifer Dilly and Jody Bass do a great job of getting our financials prepared for this and receiving that award. There is one award that I would like to point out. It's Chris Gianini's award, our CPA Deputy Finance Director. I received a letter, and the letter's a bit dated. It's from last year, but we wanted to make sure that she was in front of the council to give her proper recognition. She's awarded, for the 23rd year in a row, 23 years in a row, the Professional Finance Officers Award. It's through the Washington Financial Officers Association, the WFWA. It requires ongoing education and professional excellence. And they are quick to point out that this is not an award that's just given out every year. So again, for my colleagues, somebody in our department is winning something that they have earned every year.
Joe is getting a lot of tough time from his fellow department heads. They're just jealous of the all the awards that Joe is getting, so I think that's what the bottom line is.
Do we have to manufacture some for the others, so that they'll feel better?
How's the Valderrama wall space situation up there?
I wouldn't say it's getting bad, but I'm referring to them now as the heads of the five families. There's a little bit of tension in the ranks. Finance Department's also, every year, we have different projects, and this makes the job interesting. So, last year and this year, it's working on the Kohani Annexation and the financial projections for that. Working with the East City Gov Alliance, the last couple of years, there's been a lot of work in organizational development there. We've lended them some peer review services and some treasurer services as they went through transformation, and as well as fire services, cost analysis, that we participated in last year. The Information Technology Division, led by our Information Systems Manager, Matt McCona, I think he's close to getting his 30-year pin with the city. We also have Network Administrator position that was added to the budget last year. We had a part-time staffer doing it last year. We went out, we hired a new employee to take that position, and three days later, went back to his employer. It's a competitive market, and sometimes when we're in competition with private sector, they have a little more flexibility than we do. We also have John Whitlock, who you saw tonight, fixing our city attorney's monitor. John is the IT support specialist. He's also helped out a great deal with all the audio/video work and recording services, and absolutely happy to have him on the team. They support 130 users, approximately 100 desktops or laptops, and 35 servers, both concrete servers and virtual servers. On the external support side, we maintain the Semamish website, the maintenance development of that, recording of the public meetings. Operation of the TV21, both the channel throughout the day that shows recorded events, as well as live streaming during city council meetings. We've had pretty good luck, actually, since we upgraded the systems here and in the back room. So the live streaming seems to be one of the things that's really worked out well for us. It's an easy one to test. We can test it from home, test it from the office. So it's working out well. And again, Cynthia Tawana, she's our webmaster in charge of everything website. Recently, major projects we completed, you'll recall the implementation of the permit tracking system that we did in conjunction with Public Works and DCD, as well as the audio/video upgrade here in the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, Room 111, and the server room and telecommunications room. Projects we have planned for '15 and '16, the website redesign is actually the biggest one. We were going through a vendor selection, working with a vendor, taking a look at their product, and evaluating whether or not to use that. We've worked with other jurisdictions to get a review on them. There's a couple more we'd like to look at before we make the decision what we move forward with. We're also working closely later in the year. We'll be supporting the implementation of a personnel module, have the HR side of the financial system up and running, as well as the, working with Public Works on getting the asset management system implementation complete. And not to be forgotten, we also support, staff liaison support the Semamish Arts Commission. I get the opportunity to sit in the meetings and listen to all these folks. We know Allison does all the work, so hers is the name that is up there, and she does a fabulous job with the Arts Commission. And, once again, they're getting a lot of bang for their buck again this year, just like they have in years past. So with that, that's the award-winning Finance and IT Department. Vacancy, so I left that one off. If you have questions or comments, I'd love to hear them. Otherwise, we can move on to the next presentation.
How many awards coming this year, Joe?
Probably only, counting Chris, it's three. I should say, not only two, with Chris, three.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Joe, thank you very much for all you and your staff do for our city. It's really impressive that what you've been doing and keeping us honest. Going back a slide or two to the projects for, that there, that you have, the website redesign, the personnel module, and the asset management implementation. As we do these projects over the last few years, both myself and Councilmember O'Dell have talked about what we would like to see with projects as they come forward, is that we'd be presented also with the payback period or internal rate of return, that we can start to look and judge and see these projects, and how many years are we going to get back the money that we're spending for these projects? That would be beneficial if you can build that into your methodology as you're presenting that.
Okay.
Some of them would be tough. Councilmember Valderrama, for example, website redesign is just simply providing a better customer service, better information for our citizens. We don't get any revenue back from citizens.
No, but you can get an internal rate of return, that you could say the ease of use is going to result in these kind of savings for them and for us as well, when you're working with the geographical user interface. And just to put those estimates, so that we can show that we're getting the payback for each of our investments in different approaches and different ways, or time that citizens are going through, it's now faster and quicker. So those are the things that are normally looked at, and I'd like to see those incorporated into our methodologies.
There'd be lots of assumptions to be made on that one, as you can imagine.
I understand, but to start to present that.
I mean, if you find somebody that who is not technologically very advanced, he's going to struggle with this web navigation, so how much time it takes me versus somebody's technologically extreme advance like a Councilmember Jaren. I mean, there's a huge difference on that.
He breezes through it. But that was in the permitting system.
We'll take a look at something, but it'd be very challenging, but we'll try.
Well, you could at least do subjective comments about it.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's a solution. Uh, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks very much for the presentation. Nice job. Uh, looking at this, uh, particular chart that's up right now, uh, website redesign, that's been there for a while and I'm getting anxious to see what they come up with. Uh, I think, uh, it's always useful to have some sort of a timeline for implementation of projects like these, so, uh, we know the year, but you know, is it going to be first quarter, third quarter, whatever? And are we ahead of schedule, behind schedule, or on time?
We are behind schedule. Um, I reported, I reported the schedule out at the council retreat and at this point in the year, we thought we would have the vendor selected. Um, that's, actually seems like it's going to be one of the more timely parts of, uh, the process. We thought we had a vendor selected, um, or we were going down the, uh, road with one of them and it's not working out. It wasn't exactly what we wanted, so we're taking a look at a couple more. Good thing is, is many of them are on the federal, um, purchasing board through the federal government and as well as the state government. So what that means is, we're still doing our due diligence and cost and quality and whether the backend systems will tie in with everything that we do, but it cuts down the formal RFP process. So, we will pick up some time, um, on that end of it, but like I explained to you in January, we're hoping for first quarter to have, uh, the consultant selected by now.
Okay. Thanks. That first one is important though, because that's frankly the first introduction for a lot of people to our city and, uh, it needs to be up to, uh, the current standard. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, I'll move on to our next presentation. This is a 2014 year-end report and budget carry forward. This will include the, uh, again, like I said, 14-year-end report revenues and expenditures and point out some of the highlights, um, through the year. And then today, um, under new business item number six, we have a first reading of budget adjustment. We, we refer to it as a carry forward adjustment, but really three things happen. There's three adjustments and I'll highlight them as we go through the presentation. Uh, one is we adjusted beginning fund balance in 2015 to reflect the actual 2014 ending fund balance. Um, it will include, uh, the proposed 14 to 15 expenditure carry forwards, as well as two technical adjustments that I'll be explaining momentarily. Um, and then we'll also finish out the report with, uh, first quarter highlights. So for the year-end report, we overcollected our revenues by approximately 3%. Um, this is showing the, the straight cash in the door, cash out the door, does not include the underfund transfers between funds. Uh, for our revenue on a budget of approximately $48 million, we collected approximately $49.6 million, uh, for a positive variance of $1.6 million. On the expenditure side, our budget is $64 million. We came in below that at approximately $19 million or 30%. Um, and as I say every year, that's not 30% of savings, um, that go back into the coffers all at once. Some of that we'll be talking about, um, impacted by carry forwards, um, that we're asking from 14 to 15. That's just the basis, that's the highest level number, um, to show you where we are at with our revenues and expenditures. Uh, the revenue summary, this is the same, um, spotlight summary report that you see in the Financial Management Report. We dress it up a little bit because it is our year-end report. It shows again that, um, revenue collections exceed a budget by about $1.6 million. There's nothing really standing out on this that I won't be, um, addressing later on in the presentation. You will see the 11% other revenues, uh, under collection and that's, uh, I'll explain that to you in two slides. For some of the highlights, we budgeted, uh, sales tax at about $3.1 million. Collections came in about $3.7 million. Um, it exceeded our expectations. Keep in mind, approximately 30 to 33, 35% of sales tax collections are due to, uh, construction. Um, and the criminal justice sales tax, which is, uh, set out by the state, is, um, following the same suit. For reference purposes, sales tax budgeted in 2015, at the time we set the budget, we set it at $3.6 million. So we'll probably see growth over, uh, what we got in 2014 and we'll probably see, um, our projections outpaced again this year. This slide shows a development revenue that, um, processes through the general fund. This is anybody that comes in and applies for a permit, the permit processing fees. We break them out by the big ones, the building permits, the plan check fees, as well as the subdivision preliminary review fees, all other development fees. That's the catchall of everything else, um, the smaller permits that go along with building a home, for instance. What this shows is, uh, we budgeted in aggregate $3 million in permanent processing fees in the general fund and collected about $3.1 million. It's about the same as what we collected in 2013, um, and up from 2012 at about $2.5 million. Point here is, some of these, um, you know, are showing that, uh, didn't make budget. Overall, we did. I'd like to point out, we're still not seeing big growth in these because we've actually hit a plateau. We're pretty busy now and we have been the last couple of years, so you're not going to continue to see those numbers go up. We're sustaining a pretty high level of development activity right now, a lot of work in the permit Also from, uh, the development side, hitting the CIP budgets, the Capital Improvement Plan budgets, um, real estate exercise tax on a budget of $3.5 million, we collected $4.7 million last year. Again, every year, uh, it seems like we have our, our band of, uh, real estate transactions that occur and every year we get one big commercial property or multifamily property that really is kind of the icing on the cake and that came through again last year. Parks impact fees, right about on budget at $700,000, as well as transportation impact fees at $2.7 million. Speaking of transportation impact fees and parks impact fees, um, in accordance with RCW 82.02.070, we are required to give you the annual report of, uh, our impact fee deferral report. So you know how much money we're sitting on in impact fees, that if it's not used in 10 years, has to be turned back to those that paid it. There are no parks impact fees, um, that we are carrying right now. Everything that we've collected, uh, we spent. We have approximately $4 million in transportation impact fees collected from 13, 2013 and 2014, um, that we're sitting on right now. That's part of our ending fund balance, it's restricted fund balance, it can only be used for, for impact fee-related projects, um, for concurrency purposes. So I'm showing you this, we're required to do this by law. The report and cover memo is in your inboxes, uh, that we put in there today like we do every year. It's a housekeeping item, there is, I have zero concern that we're not going to be able to spend these funds within the next 10 years. Transportation impact fee projects, once they go, they go big.
As long as we got Laura here, she's going to do that for us. Are those fees associated with specific projects or is it a lump of money that we can donate to Sneak Hill, for example?
It is associated with all concurrency-related projects. So there's multiple projects that there's, uh, 228 Avenue Sahalo Way, um, 244 to Issaquah Pine Lake Road, Issaquah Falls City Road, um, those are the ones that just comes top of my.
Just a few. This is the drop in the bucket.
So I've talked about, um, all these items that have made, made up our revenue over collections of 2014. I will also bring up two clunkers and I call them clunkers because you could see with the, uh, stormwater latecomers agreement of a million dollars budgeted, we collected zero. Uh, similar with the parks contributions, um, for the YMCA or from the YMCA for the community center, on a budget of approximately $2.5 million, we've only collected about $1.5 million. These are timing issues. The latecomers agreement, we would only collect that money if we spent a million dollars, um, in advance. That money has not been spent, so, uh, that's budget neutral. As well as the parks contributions, um, similar to the expenditure side, that's a timing piece. When the money is expended in 2015, we will collect the money from the YMCA. We work really closely with our, our county, making sure that we stay current with our YMCA billing and collections and they've been current throughout the project so far, not an issue.
The, our arrangement with YMCA is in the, uh, the reimbursement method for the construction of the community center, so as we make the payments to contractor, we get the portion of that money from YMCA in a percentage basis.
On the expenditure side, as I, as I mentioned at the very beginning of, uh, the presentation, uh, we came in expenditure side under budget of approximately $19.1 million or 30%. Uh, this is a look at all funds put together. Um, the one thing I was going to point out, um, actually it's in the general fund department where we show, um, a couple of our departments that have exceeded budget and I'll tell you why. Uh, you'll notice here through all the funds, none of the, um, none of the funds have overspent the budget. Again, we monitor that. You would know that before the year-end report, we would tell you that about mid-year if there's anything on our radar. On the general fund side, which makes up about 20, uh, close to $29 million of our expenditure budget, there were two departments that we have that exceeded expenditure budget. Now, keep in mind, the general fund is budgeted at the fund level. So there's, um, the, the only restriction or the only, um, monitoring to this is internally, we want to make sure that we're all toe-in the line on our budgets. Two items, uh, we discussed this earlier and at length during the budget, um, cycle, Beth did a great job of, um, working through their budget. And legal services, we had higher than anticipated caseload. The budget was adjusted in 2015 to reflect the caseload that we're seeing now. Um, the other one, uh, for the second year in a row, Public Works, this is the general fund portion of the Public Works Department, they went over their budget by about 9%. This is because they're doing more development review work as part of the, um, permitting process. So everything that comes in from the permitting process related to the general fund, Public Works offsets that, um, expenditure by more than enough. So it's all revenue neutral.
I would expect that, I, I would expect that the 2015 budget on the, uh, legal services would be also higher, not because our attorney is charging more, our city attorney services, obviously, um, we have a fixed contract. It's the appeals that we're going through. We just recently have the Chestnut West appeal for about, how many days, Melanie? Five, and there's three more days to go. That's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 12 hours. We have our attorney, uh, sitting in that meeting, so we're paying for obviously the hearing examiner's cost. So every one of those appeals adding to the cost of the, our legal services. So I want to clarify that it's not because we're getting overcharged, it's just that nature of the business we're in, in these days.
Are you, are you saying we pay them for a 12-hour day?
Yep. And that's only.
Increment?
Examiners starting at 9:00 AM and going until 9:00 PM.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's, yeah, 12 hours hearings.
Yeah.
And that's only one of them, so we got multiple of those things, as you know, and there will be a few more coming in the pipeline, too.
Ben, on the public works issue, if, uh, the driver on that is, as you say, is that being offset by fee collections elsewhere?
I think this is strictly related to that we had explained to you, uh, in the mid-bi adjustments, that the, we hire a deputy public works director, that's what it's related to that particular expenditures there primarily.
Joe, could you explain the non-departmental variance?
The non-departmental variance, that is, excellent question. So, non-departmental is where we budget every year. Um, the lion's share of that is $3 million of our contingencies. We have the.
Of our what? $3 million of what?
Budgeted contingencies. So that's where we have, uh, million-dollar operating contingency, half a million-dollar development revenue contingency, and then one and a half million dollar capital contingency. We have that in our budget every year. Typically, we spend none of it or very little of it. But that's $3 million right there of that, uh, of that piece. So, to round out 2014, the, at the end of the day, uh, impact on our ending fund balance, our beginning fund balance was $73.5 million, brought in revenues of $60 million, expenditures of 55.7, for an ending fund balance of $78 million. Uh, recall that our 2014 budgeted ending fund balance was $45 million. So there's a difference there of about $33 million to the good. The difference comes from the beginning fund balance, obviously. We did not anticipate, um, $75 million beginning fund balance, but we didn't adjust the budget because recall that at the mid-biennium, it's the same budget, it was a 13, 14 budget. This year, we're adjusting the beginning fund balance because we're crossing bienniums. And then there's also the, um, the $1.6 million in revenue that exceeded budget that I talked about the very beginning and the $19.1 million under expenditure, uh, on the expenditure side. So I'm trying to give a little crosswalk here so we could track these adjustments as we go. So we'll call this adjustment number one. This is all, um, these adjustments were part of the ordinance, uh, on the first reading tonight and we're in your packet. You'll see there the 2014 actual, um, ending fund balance of $78 million. That becomes our 2015 actual beginning fund balance. Our budget for our beginning fund balance was approximately $65 million. So, the adjustment here is to increase in aggregate our beginning fund balance for 2015 by $12.7 million. In Exhibit 2 of your packet materials, that's the adjustment to the beginning fund balance. And again, it includes all funds. You may wonder why, wow, if we came out $33 million to the good, why is our budget only changing by $12.7 million? That's because of the time we developed the budget and set our 2015 beginning fund balance, um, we were looking instead of, uh, the budgeted amount, we were projecting out that it would be about $65 million. Very hard when you have big construction projects going on in the middle of construction season and you're trying to get that ending fund balance number to come in, um, on target. Our goal is to at least be conservative and make sure it's better than anticipated if it changes at all.
Nice slide. Really helpful.
Thank you. Um, I, I should have said this at the beginning of it, we had a lot of help from the Finance Committee who met, uh, last week for a dry run and took their suggestions and you'll probably see several of them as we go forward. So thank you. All right, so that was adjustment number one. Now the 2014 to 2015 carry forwards. I'll start with the general fund. These are the proposed carry forwards. Um, we have several of them here, so the general fund, we under-expended, we came in under budget by about $6.6 million. As I said earlier, all that is not realized savings. Some of that is going, uh, we're asking for, to bring forward and to carry forward. The first one on the list is the police contract settlement. We have $184,000 we're asking to carry forward. Um, the, the deputies, King County deputies contract, um, was settled at the end of 2014. For each year it was outstanding, we had asked the King County Sheriff's Office to assume a 2% COLA. Not, um, that we were in any way negotiating a 2% COLA, but we wanted to make sure that if something did get settled, that, uh, we had money set aside. So this is the money that we had set aside. Through the settlement, they actually ended up with, I, I know for at least the first year, there was a 2% COLA, there's also a 1.6%, as they call it, a signing bonus. We're awaiting billing from King County. Um, it's not going to be $184,000. I think it's going to be actually closer in the $50,000 range, but I wanted to keep the identity of that $184,000 because that's the money that we collected over the last two years in preparation for this. So realized savings from that. Second on the list is, um, uh, approximately $10,000 for the Arts Commission. Um, and this is for two projects that started out in 2014 but aren't going to be completed in 2015. Uh, 8800 is for the Garden Gates Project. That's the community garden down there and they have an artist that we have, um, under contract that is preparing, um, the standing art there that's also workable art. Um, our maintenance folks have been in part of the design and making sure that everything works so structurally sound as well. And then there's $1,500 for the Nest Project, as we're calling it. Um, we are collecting branches as our folks are going out and doing cleaning in the garden. Um, and then coupling that with the opening of Big Rock Park, there's going to be a community event where people actually build, they call it a nest, um, out of these things. It's big enough for kids to play in and jump on and strong enough and it will be part of the opening of the park. And then over time, it decomposes like, uh, the rest of, uh, stuff in the parks to decompose. Um, and that's the end of the art project. The Public Works Standards Update, this is one-third of the cost. It's also shared, um, by the, uh, Street Fund as well as the Stormwater Operating Fund. Recall this is, um, we had, uh, had issues with, um, con, with consultants in 2014. We switched consultants, uh, contract was signed. Contract was signed in April of this year with Tetra Technical, or TETRA Tech. So, work is underway for that and under contract. Planning professional services, I probably could've used a different name for that, is approximately $112,000. That's related to the completion of the comp plan. These are all contracts that were already let and settled, you know, a year ago as part of the comp plan project. And then the trail, bikeway, and pass update, this is not part of the program, it's a separate plan update. It was deferred until 2015 due to a lot of the park's resources are used up right now and working on the community center. So, in total for the general fund, $428.5,000, that shows a realized savings of $6.1 million. That realized savings of $6.1 million, the $3 million in general fund contingencies we just spoke about earlier, approximately $2 million of that we had budgeted in 2014 were potential fire department startup costs that we obviously didn't use. And then almost $1 million of other, you know, personnel savings, vacant positions, supplies, and accounts that came in under budget.
He had a few vacancies, and the department had, well, for a few months, so that's also contributed to that savings.
The only carryforward in the street fund is, again, the one-third of the public work standard update. Beyond that, nothing much to discuss. Similar with the surface water management fund, proposed carryforward, one-third of the public work standards update. The equipment rental fund, we don't typically have carryforwards in the equipment rental fund. We did this year for the ATORE workman piece of equipment, approximately $15,000. They were out of stock at the end of 2014, so we weren't able to get our hands on one until 2015. We're going to pay for it until we got it, so it's a carryforward into 15. On the technology fund, this is the asset management system, the cost of implementation. We have approximately $68,000 left on the contract. You'll notice that there's, we underspent our budget by about $11,600. Not enough money there to carry this forward. This ties into, we used that expenditure authority when we did the council chambers upgrade. That is one of the technical adjustments I'll be discussing later with you. So, for the purposes of this slide, the asset management system is well underway, we're under contract, we're proposing to carry that forward. There's still ending fund balance of approximately $200,000 before any adjustments, so the fund is okay, but there's a technical adjustment or a correction, if you will, that we're proposing to make as part of this. The park CIP fund, under expenditure of about $2.7 million, we have four items. One is Beaver Lake Preserve, and this was deferred to 2015. The money we're asking for carryforward of $50,000 is for design only. There's already 200,000 more budgeted in 2015 for construction of that. The Lower Commons ADA Trail Improvements, $78,000, that was also a project that was deferred from 14 to 15. The community center project, this is, again, timing issue and billing issue. You can look out the window, the project is still going. This is money that wasn't spent in 14, approximately $2.3 million that we're moving forward to 15. And then Big Rock Park, we have, we entered in the contract with ELM Environments in early December. In addition to this $145,000, there's also $400,000 budgeted in 2015. Transportation CIP fund, under expenditure of $3.8 million, there's two items we're asking for carryforwards related to. Southeast 14th Street Extension of $168,000, approximately $168,000. Rightaway deeds, weren't able to have those executed in time with the property owners to allow construction in 2014, so this is moved to 2015. As well as the intelligent transportation system, the requirements for the federal funding put us behind schedule a bit and caused a delay, but we're back on track. We're asking to carry that forward of approximately $296,000. Significant savings, we're showing a 54 percent or, you know, $3.4 million of realized savings in the transportation CIP fund. $1 million of that is attributed to the 218th Avenue project. It's going to be done by private development rather than the city CIP project. The 212th Avenue gap project was rebudgeted in 2015, so that $600,000 goes into fund balances. The rest of the project's already budgeted for the next year. Construction contingencies, approximately $700,000. And then there was approximately $900,000 of the Snake Hill contingency that is no longer needed because of the Snake Hill project in 2015. Surface Water Management Fund, and this is the last of the funds, the Surface Water Management CIP Fund, again, the comprehensive plan, continuation of the comprehensive plan work, we're asking for a $38,000 carryforward there. Stormwater improvements of $83,000. We needed to go out to rebid that, and the contract was awarded on, actually, April, just last month of 2015. Inglewood Neighborhood Drainage, $295,000. The design wasn't completed in 2014, so we're asking to carry that forward. And then the Town Center Stormwater Development, that's the $1 million we set aside for the stormwater improvements as a whole. That's really contingent on what developers want to partner with and what the overall plan would be. Right now, it's my understanding that stormwater work there is not, has not been an issue and has held anything up. So, we're asking to carry that money forward and keep it in our bank just in case. With that, a summary of all these, that brings us to adjustment number two, which is the 14 to 15 carryforwards. So, the total under expenditure that I mentioned, $19.1 million. In your packet, it shows up in Exhibit 3. It's considered the total available for all funds. And then the items, the $4.9 million, as Exhibit 3 refers to as the grand total, that's the total of all the, of all the carryforward items that we just went through. Taking that away, we have a realized savings of approximately $14.2 million, which was covered, I covered the highlights of that for you. The one item, the one delta between the pieces that I showed you and the 14 million is about $3.5 million. That's a $3.5 million of the town center infrastructure money that we have set aside. We didn't spend that. That money is budgeted again in 2015. I didn't go over earlier because nothing else in that fund, we're not asking for carryforward in that fund, so it didn't meet the criteria of a carryforward. So, with that, as I said, adjustment number two is our carryforwards that we're proposing. Onto the 2015 technical adjustments, there's actually two of them. The first one, as I mentioned earlier, the technical adjustment for the council chambers audio/video project. When we first started this project, not knowing, one, what was behind all the walls exactly, but really just looking at it as a bare-bones project, our 13 and 14 budget, we set aside $151,000 for this room, Room 111, and all the recording equipment behind the wall. Then we went out and we hired a consultant, we did an actual needs analysis, we got council's input of what we wanted to see. That's where we ended up putting in this new desk table here, making structural changes to the room, moving the podium. We had a proposed amount, the council, or not a proposed amount, we had an estimate the council approved up to $385,000. Then we went out to bid, got favorable bids, we completed the whole project for $283,000. And at the time, we said, obviously, we don't, you know, this is more than the $151,000 we have, do we want to move forward? And we'll plug that hole with ending fund balance. So, where the technology, the technology fund has enough ending fund balance to cover that, the technology fund is really an operating fund, it's not meant to take on a big CIP project. So, we're going to take ending fund balance and plug the hole with that or make that hole. So, we can keep our technology fund with an operating reserve at approximately 25 percent. So, what that means is, between the project cost that we had budgeted, the difference is $132,000. So, this technical adjustment, it's a net-neutral impact on fund balance. We've already made the expenditure. This is taking fund balance from the general fund and putting it into the technology fund of $132,000. The second technical adjustment is something that wasn't on our radar, and it actually officially occurred yesterday and closed, the purchase of the Mars Hill property. So, we want to make sure we had enough money budgeted in the right spot to pay for that transaction, and we do. The way we did this is we transferred ending fund balance from the general fund, which is actually an expenditure, into the general CIP fund. That's where we captured the cost of this, so historically, it's a large capital project, that's we're paying for it. So, the CIP sees that as revenue. Those two transactions, the top two, because we have to, we have to account for everything separately, each in its own fund, per accounting principles, those offset each other. Then, in the general CIP fund, we budget the $6.2 million expenditure. So, purchase price, $6.1 million plus closing costs, closing costs were not, it did not make it to $6.2 million, but at the time, we did all this work, we want to make sure we covered ourselves. So, the impact on fund balance is a $6.2 million decrease. The general CIP fund expenditure will be recognized in 2015. So, those two combined are adjustment number three. Those are the adjustments to the budget that we're proposing for you tonight. This is a step-by-step walkthrough of how, the impact of all this. So, if you'll bear with me, for 2015, our current budgeted beginning fund balance, $65.4 million. We're asking that $12.7 million adjustment number one that I explained to you to increase that fund balance reflecting 2014's ending fund balance. On the revenue side, technical adjustment number three, that is recognizing the revenue, $6.2 million of revenue from the general fund into the general CIP fund, where the church was purchased, the property was purchased from, as well as $132,000 recognizes revenue in the technology fund. On the expenditure side, the, in addition to the $92 million is budgeted in 2015, adjustment number two represents the 2014 carryforwards of $4.9 million. Adjustment number three recognizes the $132,000 moving from the general fund to the technology fund. It recognizes $6.2 million moving from the general fund to the general CIP fund, and it recognizes $6.2 million of expenditures out of the general CIP fund to actually purchase the property. Again, I know there's a lot of moving parts, but per the rules, we have to account for these. Each fund is a separate entity. Net impact of 2015 ending fund balance, we have it budgeted at $45.8 million. This will increase the ending fund balance by approximately $1.6 million for a adjusted ending fund balance 2015 of $47.4 million. I will not walk you through this entire slide here, but this is-
Thank you.
The impacts of everything we've talked about tonight on the 2015 budget, how it travels through the 15 and 16 biennial budget. So, at the very end of the biennial, at the end of 2016, we're projecting to have ending fund balance of $35.9 million, which, again, is $1,558,000 greater than what we originally had budgeted. This does not include, or this already does include, like we talked about contingency funds earlier, there's about $10.5 million of budgeted contingencies in our 15 and 16 budget. So, as we go through the year and monitor, we typically recognize those funds not being spent. So, as we always discuss, our ending fund balance could be anywhere from $35, $36 million to $45 million or so. So, that is it for the 14 to 15 carryforwards and the technical adjustments. No council actions required tonight, it's first reading. We'll be back on May 19th for the second reading of the ordinance. The next part of the quiz, or quiz, the next part of the presentation, I have two slides left for the 2015 first quarter highlights. If you have any questions or you'd like me to stop and address them, I'd be happy to.
Any questions at this point?
No, just a comment. Thank you for a very nice presentation and taking some of our suggestions from the finance committee. I think it made it much more understandable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great report, and this will be a council action item later in coming up, so if you have any questions-
Except that we don't have any action tonight, but yeah.
New business item number six. So, again, my canned response this early in the year, our first quarter monitoring highlights for you, and again, we'll have the actual hard copy reports for you by the end of this week. Revenue highlights, right now, we're showing that we are on track to collect exactly what we had budgeted. We know there's some smaller accounts that we're going to underperform in, offset by larger accounts. Too early to tell, though, anything significant at this point. I will point out that the columns, it was a suggestion of the finance committee, and it works out pretty well to help folks track how these are calculated, so there's no confusion at the very end when we show a projected variance. You'll see this in the next slide, especially when we talk about expenditure highlights, because we are showing a variance at this point in the year. So, you'll notice that each one of the columns has, is identified by letter of the alphabet, and then below that is how each one of the columns is calculated. So, projected variance, for instance, is column C minus G. Column C is the annual budget, column G is a projection. And there is a variance, like I said, for our expenditures. This is related to two things. One, under the service and charges, we're showing that we're going to have a savings of $375,000. That is recognizing one quarter, or a quarter way through the year, that's recognizing one-quarter savings of our budgeted contingencies in that services and charges category.
Okay.
We're also recognizing the same amount in our capital category, which offsets the $6.2 million that's budgeted for the cost of the purchase of the Mars Hill property. So, the two of those combined, we're showing right now we're going to be over budget by $5.5 million. It is because of the church purchase, that number probably will come down, but it's a significant enough event earlier in the year. We don't usually have, or, you know, we've been very lucky to not have a lot of yellow stoplights. This one warrants a yellow stoplight. It's not red. Typically, if you're over budget already by about $6 million, you use Joe Red, but we know we're not, we're thinking we're not going to buy four more churches, so this isn't going to be a quarterly thing.
Never know.
So, with that, that is the end of the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Excellent presentation. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Appreciate that. Next is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three minutes limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you'd like to show a video or PowerPoint, that typically must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m., the end of the business day, to the city clerk. So, all right, I've got three names, Gene Morel, and then Mary Wichter, and then Marcy Williams. So, Gene, you can go ahead.
So, do I do something up here to-
You just need to tell me which one you'd like first.
Let's just skip that for now, all right? They've had, seen enough stuff. Do you want to see it? All right.
That's a PowerPoint.
It's not a PowerPoint. It's not a PowerPoint. Do I have to, are you-
Just tell me which one you'd like first.
The PDF.
There's two, the settlement and the north.
The settlement agreement. All right, go all the way down, way down, way, way down, way down, way down, way down, down further, down further, down further, down further. Number 10. Throw that one up. All right, there, process. All right, hey, Gene Morel, 2933 East Lake-Samamish Parkway Southeast. At the request of Ben, Samamish Homeowners Association, had scheduled a meeting tonight with Mike Kenyon to discuss our, the federal trail suit we have ongoing now against King County. So, I'm taking that opportunity, this opportunity, since I'm in the area, to review and make the council aware of some continued mistreatment of trail-side residents by the county. As you may remember, prior to the start of construction on the north trail segment, show and some individual- and some individual residents brought legal action against the county. This suit was brought to a closure with a settlement agreement signed in February 2014. The agreement signed by show, some individual residents, and King County specifically, Monica Leirs of Parks. This agreement is available to you. You can see, what I'm going to talk about is specifically number 10 here. This clause, King County commits to a number of items that benefit, to the benefit of trailside residents and show. As detailed, these items include notification to the owners and show that 90% plans are available for review, for Segment A specifically. Plan interpretation help is available, and most importantly, that a planned comment period is provided and open, notified to be open. We all know the mess that surrounded the 90% plan release and the resulting feel-good city council session with Kevin Brown on March 3rd. And to be clear, none of the elements of what was detailed in this clause, number 10, were provided by the county at the 90% plan release a couple months ago. But we all heard the "we are sorry please" from the county, and left, all left expecting more from the 95% plan release. To assure that show and residents received the items committed to the settlement agreement at the 95% plan phase, show wrote an email to Kevin Brown and Monica Leirs on March 14th, which, let's just leave it here for now, but there's an email available to you. March 14th requested that King County provide the information as committed, but not delivered at the 90% plan phase. We wanted them to commit to deliver that at the 95% plan phase. So, that email is available to you and can be displayed. While the 95% plans were released last week, and to date, not one element of the detailed in this clause has been provided by the county, not even a simple reply, not even a simple reply to the email stating that the plans are available at the website. All right? My specific ask, and show's specific ask here tonight, is that Somamish City not accept the transfer permit documents from the county until all elements of this clause as detailed are fulfilled, including the completion of a new comment period as committed. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a question, did, Jean, did you say that the 95% plan was turned over last week?
It's on the website, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Quick question here.
Did the county ever tell you, respond that they think these process requirements apply to anything beyond the first phase?
If you want to throw that back up, if you read it, it's pretty specific that, all of it, yes.
The entirety of the trail?
Yeah.
My recollection was that when I read it, I had a question on that.
No, well, I-
But they've never, they've never indicated to you that they thought it-
It does. I mean, the county said regardless of existence, the county will make the night, well, at that point, the north segment was done, the planning was done.
I realize that. I just wondered if the county recog-
No, we have not heard-
... believes they're bound by this process requirement for the entirety of the trail.
And I thought it would specifically light out there, but I can't-
Okay.
Thank you.
We read it that it should.
I understand you read it that way, I just was-
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I think we're good. Thank you very much. Next is Mary Victor.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor. I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Somamish. I also live in Tamarack. I've appeared a couple times before you before, and I wanted to first thank you all. Yesterday, Mark Cross met Cheryl and the new city engineer, Andrew, and I believe Tony Dossel, and they walked around for about an hour doing a site visit in our area, so I thank you very much for that, and I'm looking forward to what they might be coming up with this for technical design and actually assigning it to somebody, but we're eager to have Tamarack Stormwater Solutions looked at and phased in 2016, if not starting with lining a ditch in 2015 above my house in Todd Southwick. So, today, we normally talk about the pond that's on 208th Avenue, and I wanted to actually talk about vegetation. So, I'm going to direct your eyes to the green limbs of that tree standing there on the left. This is what the tree looks like today. You can see most of the vegetation on that lot, that there's a building permit in review for. Most of it's all volunteer on the lot, that's just the only significant tree that's left. This is a picture of that same tree in 2004 when the lot was cleared. So, I'll give that back to you. You can see that the top of the tree is dead. The branches on the east side or uphill side aren't looking too good and downhill, so I'm really excited that the emergency tree ordinance went, and you guys are looking at that sort of thing. This is the house above me. Jita spoke two meetings ago. She talked about when her house was built in 2008, she was required to put grass in the easement area there next to her house. So, you can see this easement grass, it's been there since 2008, and it's doing well. I had gone to the sewer people who had put in the sewer in 2004, and I got this picture from them in 2003. So, this is a storm event in 2003 with surface water runoff, it was a pretty big storm, so the sewer people had wanted to photograph it. And you can see, that's what the grass looks like today. So, this was the storm event, which is surface water runoff. We still have that surface water running off today, it's over on the right-hand side, but because of the grass, it holds it pretty well, so that's super nice. The problem is, when it gets down to the bottom of the grass, there's nowhere for it to go, which is why we're leaning to get a solution implemented. And then, this is the hill that is alongside my house, you've seen it before, this is the landslide that happened in 2013 in January after clearing grade permit and the private drainage was put in. You can see there's not vegetation on the hill, just barking and some straw wattles or worms, as people call them. You can see that that same hill in 2014, we had to try to stabilize it, so we put some more tarps on it and rock on it, and we're waiting for the, whatever solution might be able to be implemented here, because there is no place really for that water to go. And I got this actually from the sewer people too. This is the stairs as they were installed by the sewer when the sewer was put in for the U-Lid S20 in our area. They did do erosion control, they did appropriate compacting, and you can see the landscaping started there with the grass growing. So, basically, we do have really steep slopes from 20 to almost 40% within our subdivision. There's a landslide hazard area, we do have environmentally critical areas. I had asked last meeting if clearing grade permits for builders could have surface water impact fees or something, because that's when the surface water starts, and the building might not happen for a couple years. Landscaping is absolutely vital, and so is vegetation and revegetation, and I hope you enjoyed seeing the pictures of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I have Marcy Williams.
I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of 26th Court. We attended the neighborhood-
Please give your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Marcy Williams. My address is 24280 Northeast 26th Court.
Thank you.
We attended the neighborhood meeting that builder Murray Franklin held on Friday, May 1st, to share their plan proposal for 14 new homes in a development called, they're going to call Gabrielle's Place. We understand that the plan has not been formally submitted at this time, but wanted to go on record as quickly as possible, that we do not approve of the plan as presented. The proposal relies on opening up 26th Court as access for these homes with the potential for further connection as the city continues development. The location, we strongly oppose using 26th Court as the main access point for this development and any future development. The location is not ideal for adding more traffic incoming and exiting 244th Avenue. It would be safer to move the access point further up 244th Avenue, especially since further development is inevitable. In fact, there are already over 200 homes in various stages of proposal and development along 244th, including another group of 18 Murray Franklin homes behind us on 27th Place, which are set to break ground soon. It's discouraging to think that we'll be subject to three years of continuous construction surrounding our homes if this new plan is approved. We feel that's an unreasonable level of close construction to endure for that amount of time. In addition, we're concerned about the tree retention plan, as Murray Franklin shared with us on Friday, that their development for 27th Place behind us met the 35% tree retention plan by saving trees on a largely unusable parcel at the back of the development. While this may satisfy the letter of the law, it is not exactly in the spirit of the law, which surely residents in the city of Somamish intended. There are many beautiful, mature trees on the proposed Gabrielle's Place property, which would be removed according to the proposed plan. We purchased our homes mainly for the opportunity to reside on a small, dead-end street, and would not have purchased had we expected this turn of events. We understood that development would happen, but not in this manner. We ask that the city of Somamish adopt a thoughtful approach and look at the long-term impacts of this development. We look forward to working with Murray Franklin and the city of Somamish to reach a plan that will be satisfactory to all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment? Anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed. Thank you very much. Next, we had one item removed from the consent agenda, item number three. This is the Sahali Way Widening Project Preliminary Design. Laura has joined us, Mr. City Manager, and actually, I guess it was Councilmember Odell removed this, or asked this to be removed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Councilmember Odell and the Councilmember Valderrama's advance notice that they were going to remove it from the agenda. So, I asked staff to give you a little background on this thing, and then we'll try to answer the questions. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ms. Laura Philpott. And you probably have a new employee to introduce to us, right?
I do. Thanks for stealing my thunder. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am happy to introduce our new city engineer, Andrew Zagerz, who just recently started with us, so I won't throw him into the fire and have him do the presentation tonight, but he did participate in the consultant contract negotiation, so if there are specific questions, he is here.
Welcome to the city.
We are very, very glad to have him on board. So, I just wanted to give a brief history of Sahali Way and why this project is before you in your council packet tonight. I want to start out that the six-year transportation improvement program, if you recall, Sahali Way concurrent, is a concurrency project. It was listed in our long-term comprehensive plan, and when we upgrade our, revised our six-year transportation improvement program last year into that, in 2014, for the 15 through 20 horizon, we added the Sahali Way project to happen within the next six years. This came out of our level of service analysis that was done in 2013, where we determined that improvements to Sahali Way would be necessary to meet our concurrency requirements. So, that was the first step, getting it moved into the six-year horizon. During the 2015-16 budget adoption process, we did include funds for Sahali Way, specifically 220th to the city limits, which is the portion identified as in our comprehensive plan as requiring improvements to meet our concurrency needs. In 2015, there was $1.1 million budgeted to begin that project. During the council retreat, we discussed kicking that project off, and there were some concerns about the scope of the project following the requirements of the comprehensive plan, which called for a three-lane roadway section with curb gutter sidewalk on both sides with landscape strips and bike lanes. The council brought up concerns that we were looking at the concurrency policies, but we also wanted to make sure that, since this is such an important north-south connector for the city, that we looked at the PM peak capacity, a level of service, as well as the AM peak, to say, to look at, is three lanes adequate for the entire way, or should we be looking at a five-lane configuration in some locations? So, with that, we worked with our city manager, and we took a pause, and we, rather than move forward with a design consultant that jumped right into designing the project as defined by our comprehensive plan policies, we have negotiated a contract with PRTI to look at some traffic study analysis. This slide I'm showing you right now was, came from the department report update back in April that I shared with the council, where we talked about, we shifted our 2015 focus to perform a traffic study, again, analyze from the differences and the benefits from a three-lane section to a five-lane section, and also look at some preliminary design concepts for, to look at, as far as not detailed design, but very conceptual, and then also work on a public outreach process, so that the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on what they felt the needs were along this corridor. We committed to coming back in May with a contract, and that's what is before you this evening, and the way the contract is structured, we would be back before you in November with the information we gathered from this process, and hopefully, that will help the council make an informed decision on what the final scope of the project would be. The planning level estimate, as defined by the comprehensive plan, is approximately 16 million, but again, depending on what comes out of this initial study, that number may change, and we will bring those cost estimate differences to the council for their consideration in November.
And the analysis includes all the way to 202, right? It doesn't stop at the city limits, as per our previous discussion.
Correct, and we will have that segmented though, so that the council can see the differences between the portions that are within the city and with it, outside of the city limits.
Yeah, so we will be looking at that, because this is a corridor that goes all the way to 202, so even though we don't have a control over the section outside the city limits, I told the Public Works, at least get us the idea, what is the improvements in that section, so that we can work with our counterparts, either King County or the Department of Transportation. In this case, both of them will be involved. City, how we, we make sure that we carry those improvements inside our city limits all the way to 202.
I know you people are lining up for comment here, but I should throw it to Councilmember Odell and Valderrama, if you want to, since you pulled this, you can lead off.
Thank you, and Laura, thank you very much, and my apologies for messing up your evening plans. I'm truly sorry about that. However, as we go forward with this project, and I'm not disagreeing with this project, don't get me wrong, I think we need to do something for Sahali Way, and we need to do it all the way down to 202. Fixing part of a road is never a good solution if the whole thing needs fixing. So, I applaud the decision to go all the way down the hill with that. A couple of thoughts which really got me going here, and that is, I consider Sahali Way to be one of the primary routes into the city from an aesthetic point of view. It's a beautiful road, and I like to make sure that we do as much as we can to keep the appearance of the road as close, as close to the way it is today. Yes, I know we're going to have to make some changes, I give you that. You can't change stuff without impacting something. However, when I saw curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on both sides, my alarms kind of went off in my head about this, and I'm wondering just how far we really need to take this. I know you're doing a traffic study right now, that's what the little rubber tubes across the roadway are all about. They're not speed traps or anything like that, it's the actual vehicle count, which provides the information we need for this. But I would question whether we need to make that part of our main north-south arterial look like 228 does out here.
Thanks.
And frankly, I hope we can avoid that, because to me, that will probably create a lot of problems with a lot of folks that live up there, that we're doing this. The other thing that I got on was, if we do this, we are just in the process of installing an intelligent traffic system on the 228th to someplace north, I think it's Northeast 14th, my 228 is where it stops. I didn't- I didn't see anything in this about extending the ITS up there, because to make this work, the whole thing has to flow, and I would hope that whatever we do would include the ITS as part of the fix up there, and if we ever get around to fixing the south part of 228 all the way down to Providence Point, that we do it there as well. But my main thing is, I don't want to make this look like just another city street. I want it to maintain as much of today's appearance as possible, but still fix the problems. That's what got me to pull it.
Mr. City Manager, you wanted to interject?
Great comments, Councilmember Odell, appreciate that. Thank you for asking that. These are, in the core, is what you're looking for, is context-sensitive design, and I do believe that the part of this study is going to give you those options, and unfortunately, and fortunately, there are some competing priorities. For example, we want the transit services to be improved in our city, we want to have more transit services. When you talk about transit, then you need to have the pedestrian connections in between the transit buses, and then in between the streets that are getting to the people, to the bus stops. Perhaps there's a way to do it on one side of the street, but then there's always, always the drawbacks, or the pros and cons, do you want to do it on both sides of the street? Do you want to do it one side of the street? I do believe that when they get to the roadway sections, they can take a look at that as part of the design report analysis, then you can make an informed decision. Those non-motorized transportation connections on the main arterials, that are important, that are important not only for transit needs, our people are using the transit, but also the safety reasons, that you've got to have that six-inch curb to provide some sort of a protection for pedestrians walking there. That can be accomplished without the concrete curb gutters and sidewalks. Perhaps you can do rain gardens, and they can look at the different options, and then put that in the other side. But I think this is the direction that we sense from your previous actions, that you want to get all this information before you with the different ideas and options, what they call, as an engineering term, still design report, is that what you guys are calling this?
Yes.
Okay, so this kind of addresses those questions and brings the information for you to make the decision. I think the November timeline, not only you will have this technical information, then you would also have the public information, that the public input that this process is going to go through.
Councilmember Valderrama, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to reiterate some of the points made by Councilmember Odell, and also I appreciate the comments made by the city manager on the change. We do only have three north-south corridors, and we're limited on what can be done to that effect, however. Seven years ago, I met with King County, and I also met with Wasdud. Seven years ago, King County would laugh that they had no money for this road. Five years ago, and three years ago, when I talked to King County, they laughed even harder because they're even more broke. So have you had any discussion with King County to show that they have more money now to do this road than they did three, five, seven years ago?
Well, I could answer that. No, they don't have money, Councilmember Valderrama. They're obviously struggling with keeping up with the street maintenance, let alone having the major construction funds. But I think the intent is here that if we can demonstrate that this is what's needed at this location, there are a number of ways to get some monies there. Grant monies is one of them, that you can go after with the state and federal grant monies. We can also coordinate with Department of Transportation, at least that the immediate vicinity of the signalized intersection there, it's under their jurisdiction, that that can be also very expensive in the overall project intersection treatments, and we could perhaps have the DOT step up the plate. I think that, once we know what are the solutions, once we get our council's blessing, this is the solution for this area, then that opens up the opportunities and create work, obviously, for us to seek the funding options for those sections that are outside our city limits. I agree with you, it would be challenging.
And I am concerned, as Councilmember Odell mentioned, of just looking at our parcel. I know that seven years ago, King County told me that before incorporation of Samamish, they had plans to double up the lanes on Sahali and the restrictions and problems they have. So I would suggest that we also look at King County's former plans that they had, taking into account, when we're looking at sidewalks and gutters for non-motorized transportation, which I think are critical on a main arterial, that we should also recognize that that road is very sensitive, and you've got parts of the road you can still see that fell off. So when we're trying about, talking about expanding that footprint, there are real challenges that we have to look at. To that comment, then, as I look at the amount of money being budgeted here, and I believe I mentioned this to you in a previous section, that $16.6 million, I think, is way underfunded, especially considering what we found on Snake Hill Road, 212th, where we were averaging $18 million per mile for the $9 million of the half-mile that we had done over there, and you're going to need to be putting in piliings and others for that side of the road. So I think we need to be able to look at those numbers again, to get a more realistic number that's put in there, and I would be hesitant to do this until we have some extensive discussions with King County because of needing to go all the way through, looking at that. And then, just as a plug to before, we should also be looking at, amongst the council, a discussion of where's the prioritization of this compared to other roads and other projects that we do have here on the Transportation Improvement Program. Has that changed as a result of the annexation process or not? But that discussion is also merited. Thank you.
Anything else?
Good questions, good comments, and I think I answered a part of your questions, and this design report is going to accomplish exactly what you're trying to accomplish, Councilmember Valderrama. I don't have in-house resources to get that information. As you know, that we're a contract city, and we hire contractors and consultants to provide that information to you. And particularly this one, that we need to be very sensitive, because this is one of our key entrance to our city, and that's why we're not jumping into the design first, that's why we're getting all this factual information for you to make an informed decision. I think this is necessary.
I appreciate that. My concern, going back to the original, unless King County is part of this discussion, doing our section is not going to do anybody any good.
And you can make that decision after the design report. Once we get that information to you, we'll approach the county, and if you think that we're not going to get funds for that section, you can always exclude that section, and then focus on the city section. But I submit to you, this is a one-continuous corridor, we've got to go through, go all the way to 202, and we need to find a way to fund that portion of the road. There are ways, we've been very successful in the past. We had had state grant monies, we had had also some of our legislators successfully put some city projects into the state capital budget. Just recently, I believe that the city of Issaquah has been successful putting for about $5 million in the state capital budget on the East Lake-Samamish Parkway improvements, as we have been on 228 Avenue improvements, and 202 improvements, and so on and so forth. My suggestion is, let's get the facts, let's know what we're talking, that will also help us to talk to our counterparts, whether it's the political decision-making body in the county or in the state legislators, that we can share them with the facts, what is needed to be done, to give you a better information.
Councilmember Whitten?
Couple of things. First of all, I like the context-sensitive design. Of course, the south end of 228 is gorgeous, except for the two brighter lights, I mean, that make us a runway, but I mean, of course, it's, you know, very well-treed. Anyway, sorry, a little competition here. I want to remind Councilmember Romero that the reason that this has really been pushed, Councilmember Valderrama, I'm sorry, the reason this has really been pushed, one of the underlying concepts was geographic equity, and we really needed to balance what the road improvements we're going to be doing on the south end, and give it priority in sidewalks. So that was a natural progression. In terms of the design of the road, I hope you look at the design of three and five with some intermediary things. I don't think we should, if we're considering something wider than, well, even three lanes. I mean, we don't need a left-turn lane all the way down the hill and all the way on Sahali to northeast 28th down to the city limits or to 202. We may need it at many key intersections, like 38th or 35th, but it seems to me there, you could have two travel lanes in each direction, have a four-lane configurations, except where you need the turn lane. And I see no reason for extra pavement for a turn lane in an area that's rural, that they're not going to have much traffic on. Near 51st or whatever street that is toward the bottom, obviously you need more of a turn lane, but they won't have much traffic. So when you look at this, and going down southeast 228th and 43rd, that's a three-lane design, and most of the time, it works well, because the two lanes coming uphill with one going down, they will need to put in a turn lane where they're going to add this new development, but something with more flexibility, I think, would be really critical. And I think maybe if you were going to do it, maybe for the right of way, you could at least use the middle for some stormwater management. I think it's really critical, and I think a large focus of this, because of the steep slopes and the critical drainage issues, should be on, is there a design that would work, that would help the runoff situation minimize the runoff, and be especially eco-friendly, and treat the phosphorus coming down the road? Also, this is the road that collapsed, so with an underground stream, so it's really important that when we have engineering issues like that with geotech issues, that we know, I remember the county, when they fixed it, did a cheap, cheap design, a really highly engineered design, and then something in the middle for their policymakers. And I think we need that kind of an approach, too, which gives us some options in the more sensitive areas of this roadway.
Yeah, these are very good comments, we're taking notes of them, and then we'll coordinate that with our design team to incorporate it in the design report.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are all good comments, and I think what we're getting out of this is, there are a lot of ideas that we feel, having been here all these years, you have that intuitively, you don't have to look at the old King County Highway 99 design. I mean, they told us when we incorporated that they do not do planter strips, because they have to be maintained, so...
Rain gardens.
They help us immensely, those planter strips, not only for storm drainage reasons, also provide a sense of protection, and create splash zones for the pedestrians walking on the sidewalk.
And as has been mentioned, as you head down into the rural zoning, you don't need sidewalks on both sides. One of the things we should think about, we've talked over the years about the need for a park-and-ride lot at the north end, basically by the gray barn. If you can have a park-and-ride lot there, you may solve some of the issues about picking up traffic. So I suggest that our consultants work with, talk with Metro and talk with Microsoft with regard to the connector as possible pullouts for the Microsoft connector. So in that respect, I would like, rather than waiting till November and seeing their design concepts, maybe they could come back to the Transportation Committee, for example, and discuss design concepts before they firm them up.
Sure, sure. What we can do is, we can maybe have at least one or two report back before November, and see what the progress is, where we are, and we can sit down and talk about that with Transportation Committee.
Yeah, and I think with regard to King County not having money for projects, indeed, TIB, Transportation Improvement Board, and Pewerson Regional Council, funding grant opportunities are always there, and if you get partnership with adjoining municipalities, you get more points towards getting the grants, so I'm encouraged about that.
Now, do you have enough built in your scope there to have two or three additional meetings?
So I was just going through in my head, we did not include a management reserve in this, but we do have support for public meetings, and so what I was thinking is, before each of the public meetings, we can bring the materials we were planning to use at the public meetings to the Transportation Committee, and get their input, along with, and then go out to the public.
Good idea. So, and do you want me to ask council to give me some additional management reserve, given this good comments that we receive from our council?
That would probably be wise to give us some flexibility as we digest.
Yeah, council, in your recommended motion, could you give, is 20% enough, another $15,000?
20% would be sufficient.
Okay, so if you could, please move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the Pertit, Inc., in the amount of $89,306 plus $15,000 for management contingency for engineering and professional services in association with the Sahali Way Widening Project.
Okay, so, well, we'll have a motion in a moment. Deputy Mayor Huckabee?
Yes, these have all been great comments. We heard earlier tonight from Jim Stanton that there's a real, that the connector would very much like to have bus pullouts. Metro is opposed to that, but I think the fact that the connector is really the major service provider in the north end of the city, I would like to see us looking at bus pullouts, and my big concern, whatever the number of lanes we end up having, that we have some ability, if there is a bus that is stopping, a trash truck that is stopping, or, for example, the other night, when I was coming home and was going to be meeting someone along the Sahali Way area, and instead of going up East Lake-Samamish, I chose Sahali, which was a horrible mistake, there was a minor three-car accident, and the traffic was backed all the way up to Bank America in Redmond, across 520, all the way back, incredibly slow, because there was no place to get around those cars, and so it slows everything down. So I realize the PM count is important, but I also want to take into consideration is, what if something happens? And how do we either move that accident, move that trash truck, move that bus out of the traffic lanes, so we're not slowing down traffic and backing traffic up four miles in some cases? So, thank you.
I guess Councilmember Odell, again?
Yeah, actually, Kathy sort of stole my thunder a little bit here, but I was going to point out that my experience on 228th, particularly the main part of it, which is four lanes with the middle turn lane parts, the quickest way to turn that from a two-lane direction, two travel lanes each way into a one-travel lane situation, is to put a Metro bus in the middle of it, and therefore, I completely agree with the idea of putting in bus pullouts. A lot of other cities do this, and simply because Metro doesn't like it, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, and I'm delighted to hear that Microsoft feels the same way, because frankly, the way you keep, the way you keep traffic moving is to get obstacles out of the way, and one of the biggest ones we deal with is the bus service. We love our bus service, we want more of it, but I just want them out of the way. Thank you.
Councilmember Keller?
Thank you. I'm piling on here a little bit, but it's only because I don't want to sit here silent on this, on this issue, but I do want to make the point that somewhere between when I pushed this button, this comment went up $15,000, and that is, this is a commute route, a major commute route for our city, that not only goes out of our city, but goes into our neighboring municipalities that we need to talk to. I think that finding the facts, as the city manager had said, getting that estimate will actually help us in maybe some of the presentation and negotiation with King County. So again, I'm piling on, but I think it's very smart that we look at the northern commute route of our city and invest this money into it.
Councilmember Whitten?
I was going to say, and I totally concur with the bus pullouts. I was thinking we should probably look at our road standards, and...
I was thinking we should probably look at our road standards and have that as one of the standards for our major commute route. And if the Parkway ever were to get bus service, I think that would be an important thing on any of our Northwest collectors that get that. And the other thing in that regard, giving my turn, Ben.
I want to respond to it.
Would be, I noticed in the middle of the city with the high schools, it's just jammed, and you, some of the times, all the lanes block up in both directions trying to get it. Schools start at times. What I'd like to see is some revamping and looking at the right turn lanes, if there's anything in this segment that is as much of a traffic generator or magnet as the high schools, that we look at right turn lanes into that development. I mean, Skyline is an awful commute, and I drive it occasionally in the morning. So I think both the bus pullout lanes and the right turn lanes for very significant projects like the high school.
Mr. City Manager.
Good comments. I just don't want to duplicate the works and pay twice for the same work for two different consultants. You got a public work standards are coming, and that's a different consultant is working on that, that has to go through you and the planning commission. I think that's the appropriate place to look for your standards, what you want to do for commute routes, what's for the local streets. I want to keep the scope to facts associated with this project, because if I add that on top of this, then I got to add another $20,000 on top of it, that I think that that work is already planned to be before you. It's, we're tracking that through the planning commission. So my suggestion is, let's just get the facts. This is the design report to get you the facts, and after that, then you can add more information. Obviously, if we need to amend it going down the road, we can always amend the contract to go forward. Is $15,000 enough? So if it's not enough, let me know now.
I think.
We're handing out dollars here, so, you know.
You do this to me.
An extra $10,000.
Would you maybe, may I suggest a motion for you to consider? I would need to work with them, rather than doing it tonight. Could you authorize me to, it's a little bit more than 15, maybe 20, authorize me to up to $110,000 to sign this contract? So let me work with them and to get this contract fine-tuned based on the inputs that we receive from you.
Well, we can see if that will work. Can I have a motion?
How much does that increase it?
It's about $20,000.
Total of about $21,000. Can I have a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Pertite Inc. in the amount of 110, up to $110,000 for engineering and professional services in association with the Sahali Way widening project?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hold on, we're hitting buttons here.
Okay. I guess Councilmember Alderama.
Just because I was a little quicker to the trigger here. Yeah, my one caveat, again, it would be that as we go forward with this project, which is essential to us as one of the three commuters, I'd like reports also on King County's positions. So when they come, I mean, this is a relatively short amount of time till November, I'd like you to check in and tell us where they are on it. Thank you.
And Councilmember Keller.
Yeah, I just, I'm, you know, I'm seeing the inflation of the contract that we're giving, you know, kind of making a decision arbitrarily, you know, across the table to spend more money. I think it's worth investing in this, but do we have to spend it if we don't have to? We don't, we're not sure that 20,000.
Well, I don't think that I'm going to sign a contract for 110,000. I'm just seeking your authorization for me to sit down and scope it with the city engineers. I suspect it will be less than that. I just need that flexibility, so I don't have to come back here, wait for another two weeks.
And delay it again.
Right.
Okay. With no further, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome on board, Andrew.
I'm going to.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? Please be back in 10 minutes at least. Okay, let's begin at item number six. We did have a discussion of this issue. Mr. City Manager, anything else for this?
Mr. Mayor, you had an extensive report from our finance staff on this item, so this is the first reading of the budget, I mean, the item, and there is no council action is required.
Any further questions? I guess Joe's probably gone. Oh, there he is.
He'd like to go.
You don't have to ask another question, but if there is another question.
If not, then we'll come back to you with the second reading.
Absolutely. Then let's move on to item number seven. This ordinance granting to Astound Broadband Limited Liability Company a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to install, construct, maintain, repair, and operate a telecommunications system within the public right of way, provided for severability and establishing an effective date. This is also a first reading?
This is also a first reading, but we need to give you a report on this.
Absolutely. So, Mr. City Manager, do you want to lead that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our esteemed Administrative Services Director, Beth Goldberg, along with our Assistant City Attorney, Carrie Sen, have been working with this distinguished company, that they have approached us to provide such services. The services, obviously, as you heard, starts with putting the backbone of the lines, and then hopefully in the future, expanding it into our neighborhoods. Before I turn it over to Beth to make her comments, we have to be careful here that when we say underground utility lines, there's many older neighborhoods in our communities, they do not have underground service lines. So if you underground the utility lines, then you have to ask the proper tuners to pay for high expensive trenching costs to get the service line as extended there. So we need to be careful with what we're asking here on this thing. I'm not suggesting that we not underground when there's an opportunities, but we need to be careful where we do those undergrounding activities. If we have so many service lines in the cul-de-sacs that you don't have underground conduits available for homeowners, that means you're cutting back somebody's landscaping driveways to extend that service lines. I've been in this many times before, so I'm speaking from experience. Not necessarily every homeowner would appreciate that, not only the cost, also the disturbance for the service lines. Alternatively, you can put the temporary poles out there to put the aerial lines extended. That's not very ugly. And then the question becomes, where you want to put that pole, and whose house in front of that pole is located? But that's not what we're discussing here. I just wanted to put that footnote as one of our discussions from earlier segments.
Could we save questions and go through the presentation first?
Yes, please.
Let's do that.
So, Ms. Goldberg, would you please proceed with your presentation?
Yes, all of a sudden I've become, I don't know, my father if you're calling me Mr. Goldberg, but anyway.
Sorry, Ms. Goldberg.
Although he was Dr. Goldberg, but anyway, I will be Ms. Goldberg and go through the presentation. Thank you again. And we'll start, I'm not going to go through a lot of the proposal because you've already heard that, and the focus of my piece tonight is focusing simply on the franchise agreement itself. Joked with Jim before tonight that he got to present the fun and interesting part, and I get the boring part that may put everyone to sleep. So Wave is looking to install a backhaul fiber network along the West Coast from Northern California to the Canadian border. As Jim mentioned, the primary purpose of seeking the franchise agreement is its commitments to its client that will result in enhanced telecommunications services locally, regionally, and nationwide. In the city of Samamish, Astound estimates that they will need to lay about 85,000 feet of fiber. As Jim mentioned, this is mainly through arterial routes. Preliminary estimates, and as Jim said, they're still fine-tuning the design, but preliminary estimates, they believe that they will be able to put about 80% of this fiber in aerial routes and would only need to underground about 20%. Again, that's a preliminary estimate, but their preference is to go with the aerial route where that exists and would only do undergrounding where an aerial route doesn't exist. Want to talk briefly before I get into the details of the actual agreement about the process for approving telecommunications franchise agreements. State law dictates that cities must approve or deny applications within 120 days of receipt of the application. We received the application from Astound Wave on January 28, 2015, which puts the 120 days up at the end of May. So this ordinance is going to take two hearings. We're here tonight, obviously, and are planning on coming back on May 19th for the second hearing and then hopefully council action. In terms of denying the application, I want to briefly touch on that and note that RCW 35.99.030 significantly narrows the grounds upon which a city can actually deny a telecommunications franchise agreement and basically limits it to public health or life safety concerns is really the only grounds upon which a city could deny an application. And we're just, we're not seeing those issues here. Federal law also provides some guidance on how a city can go through the approval process. Federal law prohibits us from regulating the telecommunications services themselves, but it does allow the cities to ensure compliance with permitting and rights of way regulations. And so we've got, the franchise agreement provides some protections, and then our actual permitting process is another place where we can make sure that the work proceeds in a way that protects the city's interests. And then federal law also allows cities to charge fees to cover the permitting costs. So now I'm going to walk through the highlights of the agreement itself, and this, this is where it might get a little bit dull, but I think it's important for you to all be aware of the terms. The basic features of the franchise agreement is it gives Wave the authority to construct, maintain, operate, and repair a fiber optics broadband telecommunications system in the public rights of way. In granting this, this is non-exclusive authority, which means that if another provider wanted to come in and install fiber, they would, assuming they go through our process, they would have the ability to do that. The agreement does not include the right for Wave to install or operate cable television or cellular services, that if they wanted to do this, they would need to approach us with a separate agreement. It also does not exempt Wave from having to obtain licenses and permits, as I mentioned earlier. I'm going to go through some of the key areas now of the agreement. Conditions of acceptance, it wants council, if council approves the franchise, Wave would have 30 days to accept the franchise agreement. They would have to pay certain administrative fees, submit proof of financial security, and submit required insurance certificates as part of the agreement. The agreement, if approved, could be transferred to another party so long as that party agrees in writing to be responsible for all of the obligations and guarantees that Wave has to the city of Samamish under the agreement. The term of the agreement is proposed at 10 years with an option to extend for another five years. The city will retain a number of rights and authorities through this agreement, including full authority over the public rights of way and full power to enforce our laws. The agreement includes a number of liability protections. It disclaims liability from Wave for damages relating to the design, condition, or safety of the public rights of way. It provides broad indemnification provisions for the city and its officials and employees related to Wave's work in the city of Samamish. It requires Wave to obtain a $50,000 performance bond to ensure full faith and performance. So if for some reason they didn't follow through, this bond would provide us some protection. And it requires Wave to maintain general liability insurance with several minimum coverage levels outlined in the agreement. It contains provisions requiring Wave to reimburse the city for various costs. First, Wave would be required to reimburse the city for costs to approve and inspect their work in the city of Samamish. It also includes a provision that would require Wave to reimburse the city up to $3,000 per year for administrative costs for the agreement. And then these are both in addition to a $5,000 fee that we received, payment that we received from, actually, I should say $5,000 deposit is a more accurate term, that we received from Wave with their franchise application, and those, that $5,000, we can charge our costs for working through the application back to Wave. So in that sense, this is a budget-neutral item. There are duty of restoration requirements within the agreement, and basically this requires Wave to restore in either same or better condition any disruption that they caused to our infrastructure as a part of their work. So if they have to do undergrounding and dig up a portion of the road, they would have to return the road to same or better condition after they were done. It has a number of construction standards, and this sort of speaks to the requirements in our public works permitting process. Work cannot commence without the city's prior approval of the design documents and work plans, and this includes our approval of mitigation plans to preserve free flow of traffic while Wave is doing work in the city. And then they must obtain all required regulatory permits. The agreement also includes right of inspection for the city, so the city may inspect Wave's facilities to ensure compliance with the franchise agreement with 24 hours' notice or shorter in the case of an emergency. And the city does retain the right to stop work immediately if it finds that Wave is out of compliance with the agreement or that work is being performed in an unsafe manner. There are facilities or facility relocations provisions which allow the city to require Wave to move its facilities under certain conditions. So for example, if there were health and safety concerns about the location of some of the facilities, we have the right to require them to relocate those facilities. And then Wave is required to submit maps of its facilities in the public rights of way to the city so that we have that as part of our records. We do have revocation provisions that basically say if there's an uncured fault in the agreement. Excuse me?
You mean default?
Or if, or if they're not meeting the terms of the franchise agreement and they are not curing that fault.
Is it default?
Okay, we can revoke the franchise. Sorry about that. Didn't catch that as we did the review. So that's the basic highlights of the franchise agreement. I want to talk a little bit about the benefits to the city of Samamish of this agreement, and this piggybacks a little bit on what Jim presented earlier. It's main, the main purpose of the work is to provide these enhanced telecommunications services, but in doing this work and in laying the extra fiber, it may allow Wave to provide high-speed broadband services to Samamish businesses and residents down the road. And then as Jim mentioned, we're in preliminary conversations with Wave about whether they could provide services to us as a government entity to support our telecommunications, broadband, internet needs. I will highlight one caveat with this, and that is that we recently renegotiated our contracts for many of these services, and they're three-year contracts. So it may be a couple of years before we could take advantage of this, but this is something that we are starting to explore, and if there is an opportunity, we would certainly take advantage of that. And that concludes my formal presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Deputy Mayor Huckabee.
Yes, now that you've told us that we can't deny this for any reason other than some major life-threatening emergency.
You shouldn't have any questions then, right?
But I always have questions. I'm very intrigued, and I have no intentions of denying this. I'm just trying to get a better understanding. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what WAVE's long-term goals are, like the five or 10-year goals. You'd mentioned that you're working in some other cities. It would really be nice to go home and when people say, why did you sign that agreement? What am I going to get out of it? And what might I get out next year, particularly since everybody would like to get rid of Comcast yesterday?
So you, you're not willing to say you did it because state law made you do it?
No, you know, that's such a wishy-washy.
Please state your name and address again.
Sure, it's Jim Penny. 401 Kirkland Park Place, Suite 500 Kirkland, Washington. And again, I'm the Executive Vice President of WAVE. 10 years is, is a long way to look out. We had no idea how much the landscape would change just in the last couple of years. In fact, we, like a lot of other operators our size, were somewhat surprised that we were invited to participate in this backhaul process. Previously, the large cell carriers, and they're the ones that start with an A or a V, they, they would not entertain a company of our size. I mean, we're not that small, really. I mean, we just recapitalized the company at about $1.3 billion, so it's not a tiny company by any means. But compared to those companies and compared to the others that they participate with, we are pretty small. But they looked at us, they met with us extensively, looked at our track record in performance and the quality of service that we provided, and they decided to go with us. And which is one reason why we are being somewhat single-focused on making sure we satisfy this company, this company's desires. And they are our paying customer. We have to fulfill that contractual obligation to them. That said, 80-plus percent of our revenue is derived from the provision of residential services. That's where we started. We know how to do that business. One thing that we really like about business services is that the businesses typically use the network extensively. They put most of the data through the network during business hours. And our residential customers use it extensively after business hours. So it gives us full utilization of the network on not quite a 24-by-7, but more, you know, 18-by-6 type usage of the network. And so we will take every advantage we can of moving into and providing as broad array of services as we can to businesses, and if it makes sense, into residences as well.
I appreciate that. The other concern I have is 228th, because we have those, the, the lines that are going down 228th are the, actually, the multi-state, multi-country lines. And I, I don't think you can hang there. So if I'm hearing you correctly, it seems like the only way to go would be in the ground.
Well, I apologize because I don't have the engineering data with me.
I understand that.
And I thought our engineering guy was going to be able to attend the meeting with me, so I didn't.
Well, maybe by the, the next time, we could have an answer to that.
We definitely will. There, there are other pole routes that I think parallel 228th, and, and those would be the ones on which we could get attachments. You're absolutely right. On those high-power lines, the 230 KV lines, usually the power companies won't allow us to make our attachments there. There's some rare exceptions to that, but usually not.
And my real bottom line is, I do not want Councilmember Jaren to be gloating that he has your service. And the rest of us don't have your service. So that's what this is all about, yes.
He lives right on 228th.
We'll see what we can do.
Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. The first thing I noticed when I started reading the write-up on this was the term budget neutral. And always looking for sources of revenue for the city, that kind of caught my eye. The, anyway, the, one thing I, I do want to question Beth about, I guess, is, or maybe a city manager, is the franchise runs for a term of 10 years following acceptance by WAVE. With 180 days of expiration with the agreement of the parties, the city manager may renew the franchise for an additional five years without further action by the city council. Is this a rolling five years or is it one time?
You and Carrie worked through this thing, so maybe you can answer this question.
I believe it's a one-time five-year, but Mike, do you want to weigh in? Or maybe we can get back to you after the meeting and clarify.
It just simply says for an additional five years.
Yeah.
One, one five years.
That's my understanding of it as well. It's a single five-year extension.
Council may want to think about whether or not that's an automatic.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't catch that?
Council may want to think about whether or not that's an automatic.
Automatic option. You may want to just say it so we bring the correct version for you on the second reading.
Well, I'd like to hear from other members of the council on that subject before we stop tonight. The other thing is, on that same page, number three of six down at the bottom, under liability protection, the performance bond of $50,000 also caught my eye. And that, Jim, to me, seems a bit low. For instance, if something happens and you guys decide this is not a good idea, it's going to cost us more than $50,000 to disassemble this thing if we decide to do that. Either that or we take possession of it. And are there any provisions for taking possession of the installed facility in the event of a cessation of operations by the carrier?
You would have right to the asset if we abandoned the asset because you'd terminate our franchise. We would have no legal right to be in the right-of-way, and you could just take over the asset. First, obviously, that's a very unlikely scenario, but I appreciate the issue. We also have a surety bond that's posted with the power company, the pole owner, which pays for the removal of the facilities because the pole owner also doesn't want facilities abandoned on the poles. So this is sort of double protection, if you will.
Okay.
The other thing, if I can add, Astound has a franchise agreement with the City of Redmond, and their performance bond is $10,000. So ours is five, five times what Redmond is.
You're trying to tell us you draw a harder deal, right?
You can, you can draw that conclusion yourself. I'm just simply pointing out that, that this was, and this was something that we, we specifically spoke about, about whether we increase it. And in the end, felt like the $50,000 was sufficient. And Mike, I don't know if you want to weigh in, if Carrie provided any additional insights that you want to share.
$50,000 is a lot more than Redmond has. I mean, a couple of other points in, in response to Councilmember Odell's question. Section 4.3.2 talks about the term of the agreement, and it is, quote, "an additional five-year term." So just once, it's not a rolling five-year term. And then section 7.14 deals with abandonment of WAVE's facilities. They are allowed to abandon them in place, but the city then has a trump power. If we determine for public safety or other reasons that we want them out, then WAVE has to pull them out.
I come from an industry where if we wanted to fly somewhere, particularly outside the United States, we frequently had overflight fees. And this is something that I think we want to get into as a larger discussion regarding other utilities that are using the rights of way. But I would like to see some sort of remuneration to the city for the use of the right-of-way.
Every city would like to see that. We'll have to talk to our friends, both in Congress and the state legislature, for a franchise fee. The city does have the authority to impose up to a 6% utility tax, but that's on all telephone services, not just WAVE's.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions for me.
Councilmember Jaren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of points. One is, again, the what happens after 15 years? If WAVE decides to abandon the property, do they have the option to remove it? Or can the city take it over and then run a municipal broadband, for example?
He's planning for the future.
It's, the, the term right now is in section 7.14. So it gives WAVE the right to abandon in place, gives the city the right to say, no, take it out of there. And not that this happens a lot, but I think most of the time you see it abandoned in place because that's less disruptive than pulling it out. Once it is abandoned and it is in the city right-of-way, it's effectively for, available for the city's use.
But they could take it out if they wanted to.
They could.
Which would prevent us from being a competitor, for example. I'm just, just hypotheticals. To me, if I were WAVE, I would rather have a longer term than maximum of 15 years. Seems like a little short-sighted. A couple other points. One is, there was a question, a concern about electromagnetic radiation. Well, light indeed is electromagnetic radiation, but it's totally internally reflected in the fiber, so there is no leakage. And in fact, if you use that for your backhaul, for the cell towers, you're probably going to reduce electromagnetic radiation that you get from, if there are microwave backhauls right now. So there's no concern at that point. The other point I wanted to ask about was, if you do bury the fiber, how deep do you bury it?
There are restrictions in the code, and it's typically between 18 and 36 inches. I'm not sure what your city code is.
And then it's, it's in conduit, I take it, then?
Yes.
Okay. And in this state, the shot clock is 120 days.
That's correct.
So which means we do have to act on this in the 120 days. Well, I'm, I'm just really excited about this option. And by the way, Kathy, I don't have WAVE here in Sammamish.
No, I know. You've mentioned that it was in the canal, but you still gloat.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, and especially thank you, Beth, for that presentation. You do have to work on setting the stage because once we saw it was budget neutral, and then we saw we can't deny, it quite doesn't ring the bell. But Mike, I like that you brought up the utility tax to get some more excitement in our audience here.
That's how I grew up.
And I thank Councilmember Jaren for warning us about our microwaves as well that we have. One question for you, Jim. We've heard several times in the future, would potentially serve the businesses and residents, in particular here, and your business obviously has started with the residential. What is in the future? What is your guess, how long that will be before you can service? You've mentioned three years for the city. What about for the residents?
Well, the three years for the city is because you're already under contract.
That's correct.
We'd be happy to do it the day after we built the system. It, it really depends on demand. Clearly, the business demand will probably come first. And to the extent that there is business demand and we extend facilities to provide that service, that gets us closer to the residential in some areas. Obviously, there are many other of the residential areas that are further away. And then it's really a cost function.
Are your estimates or guesses of like three years, five years?
We really don't have one at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitten.
Couple of things. If, assuming they go down 228th, and we suddenly, and the underground portions of it, and we then decide to expand the road to a five-lane configuration. We had this issue, I guess, when we were constructing 228th. Who pays? The relocation of utility lines is, can be quite expensive, especially when you've got poles.
Mr. City Manager, can you have a?
Who pays for that?
I answered that one as a former public works defector, I'm sorry, director. And all of our road projects, good question, Councilmember Whitten, thanks for asking that. If city project dictates utilities to be relocated, utility companies pay for the 100% of the cost.
Is that written into the franchise agreement?
It's in our public works.
I think there's some place that I can't put my.
I think that needs to.
That standard process.
That's consistent across the board, you know? The utilities, at that juncture, the utilities would get together and typically retain a contractor to do a joint trench. We'd each put in our facilities and share the cost, but the city doesn't have any obligation to pay that.
The other thing I was concerned about is unnecessary under, new utility poles. You know, I have a, when I first read that, we have a fairly affluent community that doesn't like to see new poles obstructing views and likes them to be attractive. We're not there. So undergrounding would be an ideal solution. I know there are some concerns, but basically, the visual aesthetics, you want to see trees and not poles, unless they really disappear into the landscape. So I, you mentioned that you don't put up new poles, you don't want to own them. So if that's a policy of your company, we mentioned, or talked briefly with Beth, that you might be willing to put a clause in the contract that would say that that was your policy and that you wouldn't be putting up new poles.
Yes, Beth and I already took a look at the franchise agreement and already marked the specific places, the three places where the word poles comes up. And what we would ask is that, that we not have any kind of carte blanche authority to put up poles, that's fine.
Yeah.
But if on a one-off basis, we came to you and sought permission, we'd like to leave that door partly.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. You need flexibility, just like city does. But I mean, I understand that one. But, but that, I think, would be much more, give us a much better ability to explain to our residents why we're doing this. Because that's one of the big concerns is always poles.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you have a?
I do. And Jim, I'm going to ask this question directly because most of my council members trying to find the answers. You wouldn't make multimillion-dollar investment in our city to put this line in just for the cell towers or cell companies. Your business plan to expand this into providing internet and video streaming and all that kind of stuff, is that accurate?
That is, actually.
You could have justified this just for the cell towers, for this huge investment that you're making.
It is a very substantial investment.
What you can tell us today is that it's going to be two years, five years, or six years?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You can tell just by the size of the fibers, the number of fibers that we're installing, it's far, far hundreds of times greater than what the cellular company needs. So, you know, we clearly want to use that for other services.
So this is a service potentially for our citizens in our community?
Yes.
You know, we were just trying to make it faster. We want you to do it sooner, and we'll work with you to help.
I'm Casco. Bye-bye.
I'm sorry, she can't wait to get rid of Comcast. Councilmember Keller.
Now that the city manager has made that clarification, I'm still going to ask this question about service. I'm just, I'm curious about what does it take? How many clients or customers would you need to pull a line off the cable? I mean, is there some feasibility where it, it takes 5,000 customers for you to do this, or one?
Well, it really is a function of the cost of extending the facilities. And that's fairly easily calculated based on the distance and whether it's aerial or whether it's underground. You know, underground construction can be $250,000 to $300,000 per mile in a lot of areas, whereas aerial construction is in the $10,000 to $15,000 per mile. So there's a huge variable, obviously. And, and of course, the distance requirement as well.
So if you were on the main thoroughfare and there was a commercial area that was right there, you could make that one-off connection?
Absolutely. And we extend, frequently, one of the first places we extend is to some kind of a business park because there's multiple tenants there.
Okay. Then, then one other question. I'm curious, because the contract had indicated that you could sell the franchise rights in this, have you done that in your business? Has that occurred very often?
We have not. We did a refinance of the company. It was essentially a leveraged buyout because management stepped up and with a new private It was essentially a leveraged buyout because management stepped up and with a new private equity company, we bought out our initial private equity company investor. That was done in 2012. And we did not sell any assets. We did trade some assets with Charter Communications down in California. We had a cable system asset in Cerritos, California, that we traded with Comcast.
Thank you.
Councilmember Odell?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments to follow up on the questions I asked before. These are not questions but comments. And that is that I'm, I find this a very interesting proposal. If there's any truism in your business, is that change is constant. And I feel that this, having this technology existent within the city is going to eventually benefit the residents of the city in many ways that we don't even think of in this One thing that the city manager and I discussed on a side a minute ago was the fact that this line is going to go right by the Morris Hill Church, which is the site of our proposed joint campus for three colleges. And at least one of them is extremely interested in having a good data feed. So frankly, I think this would be very attractive to, like Washington IT.
It'd be great.
And I suspect the others would feel the same way as well. So I think this is a win for the city, and frankly, I'm interested in resilient.
Just a clarification, Jim. City doesn't own the church piece, just the name of the property used to be called that.
Understood.
We're searching for a new name.
In fact, the name was coming down today as I drove by there.
Cross with it.
One question, assuming we agree to the second reading in a couple of weeks, when do you foresee starting work?
As soon as we can get the permits processed. Our folks, the ground crews are ready to come out and do the hardcore investigation of the route.
You've got work in Redmond, so you're ready to go for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Last question.
Deputy Mayor?
Are you a publicly traded company, or are you a private company?
It's privately held.
Thank you.
Mike?
Just two more quick clarifications. First of all, in response to Councilmember Whitten's question, it's Section 7.8 that requires for public works projects that WAVE do the relocation of its facilities on its dime. And then with respect to Councilmember Odell's question about franchise fees, right now, those are preempted by federal law, but Section 5.6.1 provides that if law changes, then we have the ability to negotiate a franchise fee even before the term of this particular franchise expires.
He's got a lot of time on this thing. And also, I haven't met with you before, I've been getting reports periodically from Ms. Goldberg and then also our city attorneys. So we met at, I think, the four different occasions. I appreciate that you've been very flexible and responsive to city's needs throughout this negotiation, so, thank you.
We totally understand it's a partnership in many respects, and we appreciate all your time and your efforts on this. And I particularly want to mention that Beth and the rest of the city folks with whom we've been dealing, including their outside counsel, have been incredibly professional, very responsive, and just great to work with. I mean, you clearly stood for your positions, and that's fine, that's to be expected, but it was always courteous and very, very professional, and we appreciate that very much.
You can't imagine how delightful this is that we have a one telecommunications provider, we're actually talking franchise.
I can appreciate that.
We have another ones we can't even get to the table.
I understand that. I hear that in many, many communities.
I'm sure you do.
But again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming, and we appreciate the conversation on this issue. It's very interesting.
And everyone has my contact information in the event you have follow-up questions.
So, Council, I need some direction from you, if you're okay with this thing. Obviously, we're operating under strict timelines here, so we will bring this as it is in the second reading. If you still want to make some changes, please let me know tonight, so we make sure that we include it in the second reading.
You can send any emails, as long as you don't send them to everybody and.
Well, I can't take individuals. I mean, I need to have a council's direction as a group. So in this case, it's an ordinance, Mayor. I can't, this is not like a committee session. If there's any changes tonight, is to give us a direction.
Well, there was one change that they're working on already, right?
Yeah, I heard, I heard. Underground? Not, not undergrounding per se, but heard that concern about not wanting to give carte blanche authority to Astound to add poles. There is some language in some of the definitions that suggests poles. So what we would, what we would like to propose, and I'll work with Carrie Sand tomorrow and Astound's council, to remove the phrases "poles" from some of the definitions and then add a clause that basically says that if Astound wishes to add poles, that they need to go through some sort of approval process through the city. And I think that satisfies it, and I think Astound is on board with that.
Anybody else recall any changes? Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for great presentation.
Do we need to have a motion to extend our, we're already almost to 10 o'clock?
Do we have an executive session?
We don't have an executive session. We do have a, possibly, an extensive city manager's report. And I don't know about council reports, so 10:30, you think, is going to make it?
Mine probably be about 15, 20 minutes next.
We could start there. Do you have a motion to extend to 10:30?
So moved.
Second, hold on favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is council reports. I'll start on this end. Deputy Mayor Huckabee, do you have something?
Oh, what about, oh, you're starting with?
I'm starting with you, and I'll go that direction.
Yes, I have a couple of reports. First of all, I wanted to, I think most of us were at the Kokoni Fry Release, which was another amazing event, a lot of, just really a fun event. And a joy to see so many children there. The Y Earth Service Corps developed a little game for kids to play. The little kids were Kokoni Fry. The big kids were the barriers to keep them from getting into the lake. And so they were playing in the back, and it was a great deal of fun. And it's always so good to see such a large group of people from all sorts of agencies coming together to try to preserve the Kokoni in our lake. This year, it was held at Hans Jensen Park because the Fry are hoping, they're hoping to have the Fry come back to Laughing Jacobs Creek next year. So that's my first report. The second report is a little briefer. I was really disturbed by a letter to the editor in the paper tonight criticizing the 212th project and the bike lanes. And I think that we have made a mistake somewhere along the line in not communicating the fact that those bike lanes are really a protection also for the pedestrians who are walking along that road. So it's a very integrated, multimodal system, and it works together. It's not that we're spending several hundred thousand dollars just for a couple of people to ride bikes. It's really to help our pedestrians as well. My last report, or no, not my last, the next report is on the fire. There was a finance committee a week ago, a finance committee meeting a week ago, where we looked at, discovered, first of all, that I think I'd mentioned to you that the EFNR has no finance policies. So we were given their policies and procedures, multi-pages. I probably have about 30 or 40 pages of documents that I think Stacy Goodman and I looked through, commented on at the meeting. It was very, very helpful to have a combined council, policy, and staff. Diane Markot joined, Lyndy, Linda came in because Ellen wasn't able to come. So we were able to get through about half of this work. And the next step was to then look at these, make comments, and what we've done currently, and I will be sending you this, Councilmember Valderrama. I finally got a copy of the corrected minutes for the meeting. Debbie had sent them out last week, did a fabulous job. Stacy did some comments. I did some comments. Sent them to Stacy Sunday night, got a call from her, or an email, Tuesday, Monday at 2:00. I didn't get them. Sent them again, sent them again at 4:00. Got a call, panic call, just before they were starting their meeting, she still hadn't received them. I had, ended up sending them to the clerk at the city meeting so that she could get them to Stacy for the meeting. Turns out, I, that point, I coded it so that I would get a response back. It turned out that she had a hidden file. So we're not sure if the NSA, or CIA, or who's looking at those EFNR reports, but we know somebody is really very interested in them. So I will send you a copy of those minutes. We still have about half of the work to go through. The next step will be to look at the actual financial policies, to marry these up. There's, some would call it wordsmithing, but it's probably more than wordsmithing because when you look at some of the policies, there are some questions about whether those policies are accurate, and when the auditors read them, whether they would interpret them differently than the current practice would allow. So we've put quite a few hours in, and I really appreciate your stepping up to kind of work through these and have a second set of eyes. I know that Lyman is being helpful, and Joe is willing to look at those as well as we work through the process. So that's kind of where we are at this point. My last report was that four of us had a wonderful trip on Thursday. Deputy Mayor Vance and Kathy Curry and Jeff Thomas. We went to a Green Go.
Go Green.
Go Green, thank you. All-day conference. It was a great deal of fun, but we learned a heck of a lot. And a lot of the focus of this was to look at, how do we address the issue of a changing environment? And how do we, I'm looking for my notes here because I tried to write this out. The real, the Go Green was really focusing on how do we create regional sustainability in the face of rapid urban growth, constrained resources, climate impacts, unknown disruptions, ocean acidification, and how do we prepare for the future and how do we prepare for the unknown? The first discussion was a business roundtable, and I'm going to put this in a better format and give it to you, Melanie, and so it can be part of the council packet. So this is a briefer report. The first was a business roundtable, and they told us what they're doing. And I'll mention that briefly in just a minute. But the response was to this one and to all the others, is why aren't you telling the story to the public? Why aren't you telling the story to your clients? Why aren't you telling these stories to your customers? So that they're not only hearing what you're doing, so they can applaud you for what you're doing, but also to set models and goals so that other people will be very much interested in following you. So for example, I had no idea that Microsoft is carbon neutral. They have an internal carbon tax, and they are very proud of the fact that they are carbon neutral. What they talked about is their focus here is how they can bring information technology to resource efficiency. And they're looking at things like creating a personal technology measure of the air quality of where you're sitting. Very important in many places, and it could be very different depending upon where you are in your building, where you are in given points when you're indoors or outdoors. They had a individual in their company that suggested, why don't they use micro fuel cells, which are suitcase size, to power servers? So they're going with an experimental process to see if that will work because it would save millions in power if they can do so. They also purchase green power. And typical, just like REI, they are purchasing green power projects. It's, we are contributing an extra $6,000 to PSE, Puget Sound Energy, to, for green power, but they are actually identifying specific green projects that they're partnering with. The person was there from Virginia Mason. Their concern is the climate change on patient health, and that patients are expecting them to lead. So they're trying to identify just how they're going to move forward on this because they're seeing as the climate is changing, there's going to be some significant health issues moving forward. Touchstone, which is a development company, they were very interesting. They want to build lead buildings, they want to provide sustainability buildings. And what she talked about is that the focus is wrong. We are focusing on the performance of a building rather than a location of a building. So if you locate the building in the right place, you're reducing the need to travel, you're reducing the need to put in infrastructure, you're reducing the need to put in impervious surface. And so she wanted to see how we could change the conversation. And basically, she told us tenants don't care about sustainability either. So even though they put that in their buildings, the tenants, because the brokers are working with them, are looking at the bottom line. How much is it going to cost me per square foot today? As opposed to how much my energy costs might be once I move into the building? So her suggestion is look at sustainability, look at building infill where transit is available. She talked about regulation being reactive versus proactive. And she, like many others during the course of the day, said raise energy prices. It's the only way to get people's attention. Impose a carbon tax and use the money for other issues. Salcheck mentioned, there was the last person on the panel, they switched to natural gas with a 90% reduction in air emissions. REI, as I mentioned, is doing a lot of work in the area of green power. Their recommendation to the cities was subsidize and support clean energy, particularly through a carbon tax. Not the most popular thing to hear, I recognize. Encourage intellectual conversation. This is where we can really step up to the plate. Encourage intellectual conversations in the city. Educate our citizens and increase understanding around the impact on the resources they're using. So if they're taking longer showers, if they're over fertilizing, not turning off their computers at night, using excess water, over, as I mentioned, over fertilizing, putting medications into the water system, what are they doing to the resources? And how can we help our citizens begin to connect the dots that what they're doing on a daily basis is having an impact, positive or negative, on the environment? It was a great conference. The next thing I'm going to go to is the Urban Forest Roundtable luncheon on May 14th, which should be really a fun event, talking about the urban forest. And I saw some emails today, and I understand Jeff Thomas will be going to the May 21st all-day conference on how to value the urban forest. I had the RTC that day, otherwise I would go. So I, this is.
It's an open day, everybody?
What?
Okay. Except Councilmember Odell.
Right. Well, I understand, there are quite a few people that are going. So anyway, it was a great conference. I appreciate the opportunity to go there. And I think, given the fact that Governor Inslee has suggested we conserve water, and there was an article in Saturday's paper that it's important to conserve water, these things are all starting to bubble up, and how can we educate our citizens around this? I think Don and I were talking about the Tesla approach. I don't know if many of you saw the announcement. Tesla is moving into the home battery to, so that one can pair up their solar power with a backup battery in their garage. They're doing some, they're doing some projects down in California. My husband is sending them an email to see if we can do a project here in San Amish, and we'd love to help that. So anyway, I think there's a lot that we can do, and as we go forward and talk about sustainability in the future, these are a lot of things we can work on and work with our citizens on. So that's it. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Odell, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I've got several things. Unfortunately, I missed last week's meeting for personal reasons, but I began the Monday two weeks ago by attending a presentation of a student team at the Tesla STEM School down on 202. And, the subject of it was transportation issues in Sumamish. And, this team had been given the task of trying to look ahead and seeing what our problems were, and coming up with some ideas about what we might do. They wound up interviewing me as part of this, and I gained some things to think about. They went back, and they, they did a very good job on their presentation. So, I commend the teacher for designing this project, and I commend the students for doing it. And, there were actually a couple of good takeaways from it. The, later on that day, for Mayor Vance had asked me to attend a event downtown hosted by Doc Constantine, which was entitled "A Conversation with Allen Bear Ruber of the Brookings Institute." This wound up being a relatively small meeting, maybe 20 people, with Executive Constantine hosting it. That dealt with the Brookings Institute's view of where the Puget Sound region is going to be going, and the issues we're going to have to contend with over the next couple of decades. It's population migration issues, it's affordability issues, it's transportation issues. And, I'm going to try to get a copy of this guy's presentation to share with the council, because I think we'd all benefit from it. A couple of days later, on that Wednesday, there was the first Growth Management Policy Committee meeting of the year. And, it was one of the shorter ones I've attended, which was interesting, but with one subject, school siting. We've been dealing with this for two years, and this is, I hope, the last time we touched that.
It was there when I was on PIC 10 years ago.
Okay, well, obviously, we haven't come up with a great solution for it. But, the, for the benefit of those watching at home, wondering what I'm talking about, a number of school districts had bought property or acquired property on the wrong side of the urban growth boundary. And then, they petitioned for an exemption to bringing utilities, which has some people all up in arms about, this is the camel's nose under the tent. And, the, the answer is no, they're not going to do it. So, the outcome of it was that the schools, the school districts and the city planning departments for all the affected communities are now supposed to get together every two years and review the space needs for the school districts, and possibly take different approaches, which could include going vertical in existing locations, rebuilding one-story schools into two, as they're, as they're rebuilt anyway, and doing things differently. But, the, the upshot of it was, nothing's going to happen outside the urban growth boundary, at least for this round. The next thing on my list is, I attended the Legacy for Learning Luncheon for the Lake Washington School Foundation on Wednesday, the 29th. It was extremely well-attended. I know a number of us were there. And, I, I think they had a very good result from a fundraising point of view. It's always interesting to listen to the kids that they bring up, to talk about various things, to listen to Dr. Tracy Pierce, the superintendent, talk about how things are going in the district. And, it was, I think, a very good thing. Ran from that to the Coconie Work Group meeting that was starting the same time this thing ended, the, the school luncheon ended. And, so, I walked in late, obviously, but there's some things there that are, we're talking about, and that is, the run this year, the return of the Coconie this year has not been, not been stellar, to be very blunt about it, in fact, it's been not good at all. However, next year, they're expecting a tremendous run, based on the fry that were put in the, into the lake three and four years ago. That came with a plea for us, the city of Sumamish, to take another look at its culvert replacement project on Ebre Creek and Zacuse Creek. And, I would like for, for us to have further conversation on that. If we could manage to get even one of the culverts replaced in short order, it could really help the Coconie. The last thing I did was, I was the Sumamish representative of the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly meeting. The focus of that meeting, frankly, was on sound transit, and a plea for fully funding their $15 billion request to extend the line north to Everett and south to Olympia. There was passing discussion about extending it elsewhere, and a number of us, myself included, got up and made the point that it's nice to do this, but it needs to be part of an integrated system, and it won't do us any good on the east side if we can't get to it. So, that was that. That is my report, Mr. Mayor.
And, Councilmember Whitten?
I have a couple of things. One, the, it's nice to see the community center progressing. This is the first night where it's been getting dark later, and where we haven't had the shades pulled, because the sun was setting. I didn't realize we were going to lose our beautiful view from the council chambers. It's gone. It, all you see now is a blockbuster. And, the blockbuster has on it banners that are very, I'm sure, informative, but they kind of detract.
Actually, the roof pitch is not higher than the tree lines that we have there. So, I think the background was dark to my view, because it's cloudy.
Well, but all I see now is, is, is that building and the banners. And, it's very blockbuster-y. And, I was going to ask if we could include in that something green, to hide the blockbuster approach of the building. Something to make it, soften it, like the front of City Hall has, a really nice set of trees every few feet or something.
I think we do have a landscape in plan, that if I would just wait on that one, if you, Australia.
Just trying to bring it up for consideration. If we don't, maybe they could have hanging vines or something. Something, something to break it up and give us back some natural beauty to.
I think one of the walls is going to be a green wall, a broom wall.
Oh, good. Maybe the whole thing could be, yeah. I've seen it.
I would wait until we get this in, and then we can decide if we need to do more.
The second thing was, how we bring up potential topics for, to be discussed further on the agenda. First of all, how to get them onto the agenda. And, I had a, some thoughts that Mr. Vance and I discussed a little bit earlier. We used to have a parking lot, which staff would keep track. As you go through these different topics, you see related things that you really like, that you want to do in-depth at some point in time. But, they get forgotten in shuffle, in the shuffle of.
It's there.
The parking lot?
It's, it's got to-be-scheduled park items.
In the back of the calendar.
The sheet's blank.
Well, they don't come to us. Well, I have two items I'd like to put on the parking lot list. One of them is, see, they should be discussed in more depth. One of them is off-leash dog parks. And, again, I came back from Boston, and the, the main park in Boston is the Boston Commons, and it's in the center of the city. It's where all the historical stuff was. And, it's an off-leash dog park. They don't even have fences. And, it goes from morning to night. And, you see these dogs romping around, no fences, and I, my first reaction was, wow, wow, they're in a city park. They must be illegal, and they must not enforce it. But, they don't. So, I would love to see discussion of maybe limited hours, or, and limited parks where it could be available. But, opening up some of our parks, because the cost would be minimal. People are really responsible, usually when they're treated like adults, and they pick up after the dogs. And, people who didn't want dogs would know that this was either a park where it was permitted, or it would, that certain times it would be available. And, you can do that with just a minimal investment. And, it would really help meet a need in the city. So, people who didn't want to see dogs could go to a different park, or could choose a different time. But, to have some area where.
We're not arguing whether we're going to do this yet, so let's get your list.
Sorry, thank you.
That's all right.
And, the second thing I'd love to see is, we brought it up a few times, is a long-term, comprehensive view of our city wish list on capital projects, for both parks and road improvements, and anything else that's fairly major out there, or maybe stormwater. And, covering the same time period, revenue projections, which I understand are get more speculative, that would permit us to take a view of how we could be financing, and when these could be, and setting priorities.
Councilmember Whitten, I don't mean to interrupt, but in the Finance Committee report that was given to you in your packet today, we, I indicated that that is a project that we're going to be working on.
I was hoping that was it. I couldn't read it, because I didn't know what you were talking about, of long-term carryforwards with just.
No, this is, this is my report to the council.
I've read it.
About our Finest Committee meeting. And, it was a one-page document in your packet tonight.
I read it, and I couldn't make, I wasn't sure what your reference were, your definitions of different things were.
Well, you've asked for that, and that's what we've, we've responded to.
So, we agree that's what it is.
Yeah.
But, we could put that on the parking list.
And, then, one thing I'd like to see added to that is, especially for parks, can we get, look at a steady source of funding for that? We talked at one point, when we did a Parks Potential Bomb that didn't pass, about a levy, levy that would be an ongoing source of assured funding for, for some of those parks.
I think once we understand what the liabilities are, we'll understand whether we do need an additional source of revenue or not.
Oh, I am adding two items.
I, I would just suggest that if, if others have other items that they would like to add, please, please, please do that, and perhaps that's something we could do after the meeting too, as well, so.
Do we, by emails, yeah?
By email, or whatever, yeah.
Or items to come out of the park list, that has to be the four councilmembers' votes. That's what we're going to do.
Well, in terms of, of making a decision to actually enact something, yeah. But, but to, to put something on the list, I thought one or two people could do that. But, then, then we, we go to the council, and if we can get four people to say, this is something we need to do, then we can get it on a study session.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Is that it?
Well, a, part of that might be asking Ben what he thinks we should, we might be able to take off the list.
That's true, too. And, that's always going to be part of the conversation.
If there's something, a new idea that comes up that's going to take some time, especially if it's controversial, and you're going to have a lot of council flack, you want to make sure that.
Well, that's why we need four people.
We know what our options. Yeah, but I know, but we need to know from staff what the options would be. If Ben's going to give us his very educated, informed, and very accurate suggestion that we don't have the manpower, then we need to know what he might suggest to take off the list, so that we can get it done and not create staff crises.
Thank you so much for being considerate about that.
Councilmember Jaren?
Thank you. Just a couple of brief items. One, I did go to the Coconie Work Group meeting that Tom came.
Walked in late on.
Walked in late on, right. And, King County did do a video of the fry release, and they edited it for their, their report. But, the raw footage is available, and I, I've asked their city manager to see if he can get it, and perhaps put it on Channel 21.
I did ask our communication manager to follow up on that one. Councilmember Jaren?
Good. Okay. And, the other thing is, the Sound Cities Association Executive Committee is meeting tomorrow with first Seattle Council President Tim Burgess, and after that was Mayor Murray. And, one of the topics is going to be committee to end homelessness strategic plan, and so I'm turning to my neighbor here, Councilmember Keller, because I think that's on one of his topics to discuss. And, that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Keller?
Great. Actually, great segue, thank you.
Can you get a little closer to your, there you go.
First off.
Sit down?
Yes. Okay, thank you. I want to really thank Lyman, and Jeff Thomas, and Arthur Sullivan, because we had a meeting here at the city to talk about the committee to end homelessness. You know, the, the third revision of the plan, the strategic plan, was released about two weeks ago. And, so, we met to talk about that and give some more revisions. And, I want to say, Arthur Sullivan was here. He was very responsive. He took notes on everything, and I know he was submitting the comments that we made that day. Jeff Thomas, he sent me an email with a list of edits that he went through to supply, to provide to the committee. So, as Councilmember Jaren had just said, he's going to be talking about it tomorrow. I'm waiting for the package to be released from the SCA Public Issues Committee. That will probably come out Thursday or Friday, which will be the notes for their next upcoming meeting. When I get through that summary, I'll see what feedback we've gotten from the information that we've given them, and I'll submit a report, a formal report, to the council. So, this is really more of just a status of where it is right now. So, that was the first thing. The second thing is, the waste transfer station. The city manager's going to talk about that extensively after this. The only, I, I've mentioned this before in some of our other meetings, because, again, the Public Issues Committee has been working on this. But, the last release that we got, the last message from them, was that the PIC was probably not going to take a position on this, because it, of the nature of it and the membership that we have. And, I'm sure the city manager will comment on that when he gives his report. The next thing is, I went to a meeting called the CTE for Lake Washington School District. It's the Career Training Education banquet that they had. And, they have this twice a year, and it's basically to give a program to give kids an early career experience in their education. And, so, the classes that they would take would be like photography. I'll give you an example of how this program worked. They had a couple of students that took photography classes, and then they created a business model, which was online business card, or greeting card creations. And, the young girl that was taking the class and created this is making money, and it's an incredible program that they had. So, they do this twice a year, and I had the opportunity to go and view that. And, then, the last thing is, tomorrow, EFR is having a personnel committee meeting, and we'll be talking about the chief's replacement in that meeting.
Sounds like fun.
That's it.
Would it take what about, how long do you think your report?
I, I'm going to be like everybody else, 15, 20 minutes.
That's why I think we maybe need another motion to extend an additional 20 minutes, maybe?
Well, second.
Any, all in favor say, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Going to start the clock?
Yes.
All right. So, I have a couple of points. First of all, I'm glad to see what the Finance Committee is doing, but I would reiterate what Councilmember Whitten had said of the need for a comprehensive list of all capital projects, not only the ones that we are looking at, but other ones that we have on our wish list, like the YMCA, property indoor facilities, et cetera. I think that's invaluable. I had attended the second half of the citizens for Sumamish meeting yesterday. I had another commitment prior to that. And, what was interesting, they did raise a couple of issues, just to reiterate. They did mention that, in addition to the initiative passing here in Sumamish on the advisory vote, that there is a bill that passed the House and the State Senate for the utilities, waiting for the signature of the governor relating to the cities and the taking of those requiring a vote to take place also, and just to make sure that there's a level setting of everybody being aware of that. Second, there were quite a few comments from citizens there. Second, there were quite a few comments from citizens there interested to know about the 95% plan and the 21-day comment. Today, we heard from Mr. Morell that the 95% plan came out. It would be good to be able to see that presentation. I understood we would be getting a presentation on the 95% plan and then be able to see also how they've revised their comments, particularly to the city comments, because there were in the city comments, as citizens had cited a number of areas that they were non-responsive to the city as well as citizens. So I look forward to seeing that being scheduled. And then based upon that, we can then, as planned, meet with the elected officials from King County, as we had discussed previously. And I believe that's my report. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, it's all yours now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very quick. I had previously planned to have two reports. One of them can wait for next council meeting, that the Klahani issue. There's no urgency on that one. I'm going to have to, however, get a report and get a direction from council on, and one other issue, and that is the King County transfer station plan. Deadline for our comment period is tomorrow, so that's why I need to get that tonight. Let me have maybe perhaps our administrative services director to give you a brief background on this. What it is is that the plan currently, as it stands, is direct, destined to have only one station, that is the Factoria Station. And then the existing station in the Kirkland area is going to be eliminated. Some cities have concerns about that. I am concerned about it for our city, too. Factoria Station to serve that, the whole of this east side, northeast region, it's a little bit ambitious. It's already, certain days are very crowded, lines are longer. And I feel that some of the assumptions were made in the plan to say that we no longer need to look for another location, therefore, one location is sufficient, is a little bit, in my mind, is shortsighted. Having said that, we have, one of our sister cities have a very strong opinion on this, and that is our sister city to north, that they feel like the Factoria should be sufficient so there's no need to spend this additional money to build another transfer station. But yet, what we're hearing from other cities, for example, Bellevue and Renton feeling the way that we're feeling it here, and tonight, actually, the Kirkland and the Bothell councils are talking about it, the cities in the northeast, pretty much in being supportive of the idea to say that we're not suggesting build a station, but don't take out that option from the plan. Keep it in the plan, and let's keep discussing about it. Let's not be shortsighted about this issue. I wanted to talk to a good friend of mine, Mayor Marchione. He's on vacation this week, so I did talk to his assistants, and I understand where they're coming from. I did also talk to Bellevue folks that they've been kind of concerned about it because the Factoria Station is right in their city. And I think that our conclusion here tonight is that I need your concurrence with my suggestion that we send a letter to King County to suggest that, to keep that second station in the plan. Don't take it out of the plan. That would be shortsighted for us to take it out of the plan at this early stage.
This is particularly referenced to North County.
North County. Northeast County.
What happened to the one at Houghton?
That one's going away, I believe.
So the Houghton's scheduled to close in 2021. And so the, it's in a residential neighborhood, and it's not compatible with the neighborhood quality, and it's past its useful life. So it's scheduled to close, and it's been scheduled to close for quite some time. The question is whether King County replaces that with another transfer station in the northeast portion of King County, or can we live with just the Factoria Station? And that's the question before us.
But the transfer station serve both the commercial as well as the residential home?
Correct. And so the concern, so the existing transfer station plan, and we are a regional partner in the King County transfer station system, the current plan contemplates building a new northeast transfer station after Houghton closes. The King County Council passed a motion requiring the King County Solid Waste Division to explore what it would look like to not replace the northeast transfer station and develop mitigation strategies. So the plan that King County is asking for comments on now presents those mitigation strategies. Yes, the transfer stations serve both residential and commercial. The mitigation strategies that King County has laid out to ease the burden on Factoria would assume first and foremost that we all achieve the 70% recycling rate. We talked about that the last time I was here, doing my trash talk. And there are concerns that that is not achievable. So that's one of the underlying premises of mitigating this, is that we achieve 70%. So that's one concern. But the other concern, and this gets to your point, Councilmember Whitten, is that the other mitigation strategy that they're contemplating is restricting self-haulers' use of Factoria, either eliminating it or reducing the availability. And so there's concern among some of our sister cities that that disproportionately impacts northeast King County residents, that residents in other parts of the county are going to have access for self-hauling. And so that's also one of the rubs that is raising concern among the cities.
Could you, I think, could you clarify that a little bit? I'm quite interested.
So right now...
A commercial self-hauler or an individual?
Both. And so that's, that gets at the concern, is like landscaper, small construction companies...
My garage.
Your garage. But that's a personal issue.
Habitat, the community garage.
Or, you know, like some of the, some of the schools haul their own garbage, you know? So self-haul is not, is not Councilmember Vance following a weekend of cleaning his garage. It's broader than that. And so the mitigation strategies would basically say, in all other parts of King County, self-haulers have equal access to the transfer stations. But in Factoria, they're contemplating limiting the access, either the hours or restricting it altogether, saying, you can't come here, you've got to go somewhere else. And that, so there's some inequities that are created, and that's the concern.
That's actually outrageous, and it's apt to leave to dumping out in the rural areas or even into our parks or other places if people don't have access to a transfer station to take things.
So given all these facts, I need to keep moving this thing. And I think there's a reasonable position on our part to say that we want the county to keep this plan, keep this option in the plan.
The option, yes.
Councilmember Jaren, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I support the city manager in that comment. I was going to bring up the self-hauler issue. Doesn't Algona have an issue, too, because they don't want the transfer station down there?
Right.
Yeah, yes.
So that would be shutting down a south one also.
But it's not been taken off the table. I think the difference, so yes, there is, not to get into other cities' issues, but there are, there is some tension between King County and Algona about the citing of a new station down there. But what we're talking about here is basically taking the option off the table altogether by removing that from the plan. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit different.
So I support the...
Can we stay brief? Councilmember Rodell?
Yeah. This whole issue was...
Not particularly you, but...
...talked about where, when I was in the, when I was on the pick. It's, and it's obviously not progressed much further since. But one thing I do want, did want to point out is, as you just, as we just mentioned, there is a, there was a plan for a new transfer station in the southern part of the county. The last time I checked, that was not going anywhere. And if it doesn't go anywhere, plus they closed down Houghton, that's going to put more, more pressure on Factoria. And I think we're going to see longer lines. We're going to see increased rates from our haulers because their equipment's going to be queued up much longer. And for Mayor Vance, he's going to have trouble getting rid of the stuff in his garage. So I fully support the city manager doing this.
I think I just need a hat knot from the council to do this. I'm seeing a hat knot from all of you, except Councilmember Keller.
I just want to make one statement, and that is, again, what you're going to state in the letter really is to not take it out. We're not, we're not, we're not suggesting that they build it. We're just saying that they should keep that option.
Our letter will be very similar to City of Bellevue's letter, actually, identical, which is...
We all agree the message is to keep it that. We're good, thank you.
Thank you. Well, since I finished this early, may I talk about Klahani?
Yes, please.
Could you put the resolution up, Melanie? This is one of the resolutions that we passed prior to the election of Klahani. And in that, in which we made a commitment that we would establish a transition committee in Klahani. And we don't need the answer tonight, how we want to do this thing. I was going to come, I come to you with a suggestion that you might consider doing it. And this is the resolution that what we said on the Section 3, I believe, that the Sumamish City Council is committed to abstract the annexation and merging process through such a transition committee. So the question is, how do we form this transition committee? Who's in this committee? This is obviously your decision, but I would suggest that we consider doing that. Can we put the Klahani map up there, Melanie, please? This is, this is the Klahani map. There's so many neighborhoods there. To my estimate, there's 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 11, 11 non-neigh neighborhoods. Klahani Association, Brookshire Estates, Brookshire East, Brookshire Crest, Hunter's Ridge, Hunter's Place, Rainbow Lake Ranch, Summer Meadow, Glenwood, Autumn Glen. And then there's three neighborhoods that we're checking whether or not they have a HOA, Summerwood, Pine Lake Meadows, and the Summer Pond. I think that you might want seriously to consider having the HOA board to select a person from their board to be a part of this transition committee. Why I'm suggesting that you do that, they do have their periodic communications with their membership because they're the homeowners' association. And our critical issue here is that we periodically get this information so people are not operating in a vacuum. And then, as HOAs, they know exactly what the issues are in their communities and neighborhoods. So, and some of these HOAs, that some of the leadership of the annexation are actually directly involved in this thing, and some unfortunately are not. But what I'm looking for is that a committee that facilitate us to get the information out there and also to receive information from there. We don't have to answer this. We want to think through it, and then we'll have a discussion further down the road.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just a brief comment on that. I wonder, we do mention in their businesses also, so whether the Klahani Shopping Center...
That's a great idea.
Businesses.
We should talk to them. Do they have an association there?
No.
The Chamber of Commerce has been talking to them.
Okay, I'll talk to the chamber to see what will be the contact from there.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Readjourn.